Okay, Catherine, I think you have a script to read, or if you want me to read it, I can.
I do, I have it in front of me, so I will go ahead. So before we begin and prior to roll call, I do want to make clear for the record that this council meeting is being conducted pursuant to the Brown Act provisions for teleconferencing in section, Government Code Section 549, 53, subsection B, and that Mayor Haskell is participating remotely from the location Smith, Tribeca Hotel, 85 West Broadway, Room 610, New York, New York. Mayor Haskell is participating by Zoom webinar. We can see you, Mayor. Unfortunately, you can't see us, but that is still allowable under the rules. I'm getting some feedback now, though. Let's see, I think it's, I'll just continue, I think it's gone away. So I'll just note also that in accord to the Brown Act, the teleconference location has been identified in the agenda for tonight's meeting, and we have a quorum of council members present here in person. All right, Mayor Haskell, I have a few questions for you just to confirm. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
All right, and have you been able to hear the proceedings up until now?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
Yes.
And have you posted the agenda at the location where you are?
Yes.
And is your location reasonably accessible to the public such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to do so?
Yes.
Is there any member of the public there with you now?
There is not.
Okay, great. And now, council members, can you please speak up if you have any issues with hearing Mayor Haskell? All right, hearing no concerns, I will go on to say, we can go ahead and proceed with tonight's meeting, and that all votes taken at tonight's meeting need to be by roll call. All right, and now with that, I will ask the town clerk to proceed with a roll call.
Councilmember Flynn?
Present.
Councilmember Hupdi?
Present.
Councilmember Walter?
Present.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Present.
Mayor Haskell?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Great, thank you very much. The first item on the agenda is a proclamation honoring June 2025 as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer plus LGBTQ plus Pride Month. Whereas, the town of Portola Valley recognizes the fundamental value of every individual and is committed to ensuring that all residents are treated with dignity and respect. And whereas, Pride Month is celebrated across the country each June to honor the history, courage, and contributions of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer plus community, and to recognize the importance of promoting equity, acceptance, and visibility. And whereas, the diversity of the LGBTQ plus community enriches the cultural fabric of our town and contributes to the vibrancy and resilience of our shared civic life. And whereas, the town of Portola Valley stands with other communities in the San Francisco Bay Area and around the United States in affirming the right of every individual to live authentically, safely, and free from discrimination. And whereas, the observance of Pride Month provides an opportunity to celebrate love, foster inclusion, and educate ourselves and future generations on the ongoing work of building a more just society. Now therefore, be proclaimed that I, Judith Haskell, Mayor, Town of Portola Valley, to hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as Pride Month in the town of Portola Valley, and encourage residents to engage in acts of compassion, learning, and unity in support of all members of our community. Thank you. So what, I will ask Catherine for the formality of, I know we have someone here to accept the proclamation, and I'm not, this is the first time, so what is to be done?
The, yes, the acceptance is online right now, and so I would suggest that you invite, and I'm going to make sure I get your name, Lo Ellen, to speak at this point.
Okay, Lo Ellen, do you have any remarks for us?
Of course, well, I just want to say, I'm an emotional person, so I'm very moved, so I just want to apologize ahead of time.
No need.
So my name is Lo Sanga, and I use she and they pronouns, and I am the Community Engagement and Volunteer Specialist for the San Mateo County Pride Center. Thank you so much for inviting me to the Portola Valley to accept this proclamation on behalf of the LGBTQ plus community and the Pride Center. And thank you to the town of Portola Valley for demonstrating your support for the LGBTQ plus community by passing this proclamation today. The Pride Center is, has always been a home where people who identify in the LGBTQ plus community can be themselves, receive support, can be affirmed on who they are. And if you aren't aware, we provide a wide range of programs and services to individuals and families to support their overall mental health. These services include clinical therapy, pre-case management, peer support groups, special events and trainings. At our center, we also have a food pantry, a computer lab, lending library, and a closet of free clothes and gender-affirming garments. As a team, we proudly represent the community we serve and all identify as LGBTQ plus, including myself. I'm committed to this work because as someone who grew up in San Mateo County, I didn't have a place where I felt free to be myself, especially as a Filipino with a Catholic background, talking about my feelings, about my queerness was never a topic ever brought up. I wish I had the Pride Center growing up as a resource to make connections about my own mental health. This proclamation isn't a piece of paper for the LGBTQ plus community and acknowledgement from the town of Portola Valley that you are, you all are behind us, supporting us, and walking through along this life with us. Thank you for demonstrating that you, that you and your residents in San Mateo County. I'm so grateful for this moment and the LGBTQ plus community. Thank you again for allowing me to be here and accepting this proclamation.
We appreciate you being here and sharing that with us and telling us about the center, which is an important thing for people to know about. It sounds like it's really a great place of support for the community, so thank you. Do any members of the council have any questions or remarks briefly? I'm going to have to ask Craig to interpret what's going on in the schoolhouse for me.
I was gonna say, I'm looking for you, so I think Helen has something she'd like to say.
I would just, thank you, I would just echo what our mayor said on the proclamation in terms of affirming the right of every individual to live authentically, safely, and free from discrimination. And I hope that Portola Valley can honor that and welcome all. Thanks.
Anyone else? I now see you guys, by the way, so it's helpful.
Yeah, so, yeah, we got the camera on, so that's good. So no other council member comments.
Okay, well, thank you again for sharing that comment with us, and we really appreciate it. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Take care, okay? Have a great evening.
You too.
Bye.
All right, so now we're going to move on to the town manager report. Mark, do you have any comments for us?
I do. The most important comment I have tonight is introduce to the council and to the community our new town clerk, Veronica Dow. She's right here, working hard. She's been here, she's been here a full week, and has already had her first packet out and her first town council meeting. She comes to us from Palo Alto, where she served three committees and commissions related to the planning department. So, welcome. That's my, and my other announcements, and you all get to know her as time goes on here. I understand that PV Palooza was a big success, big turnout, lots of activity, so congratulations to the folks who put that together. At the next council meeting, I'll give you some more information about what's coming up beginning July 10th, which is the Summer Concert Series, that's when it begins. Mayor Haskell and I had an opportunity to meet with Congressman Mercado about a week or so ago. He came to us, met in our offices for about 30 minutes to go through some of the issues that we're facing and he's facing. It was, he was meeting with a number of cities in this area. And the Vice Mayor and I today were able to zoom in on a, the congressman's back in Washington DC, so he was doing his best to explain the budget process in Washington. I'm happy for our budget process here compared to the one there. And I noticed that there were a lot of things going on today about graduation, so I do want to extend a big congratulations to the Portola Valley grads, wherever they're moving from middle school to high school, high school to wherever. And I was reflecting on my, my high school graduation year was 1964, which is the year that Portola Valley was founded. So it was an interesting connection watching all these fancy cars all decorated and everything today. So congratulations there, and that's my report. Thank you.
Great, thank you, and I'll echo the welcome to Veronica and the congratulations to the graduates. Next, we will move on to oral communications. These are opportunities for the public to raise topics that are not agendized and/or to remark on the town manager's report. So I'm going to ask Craig to help me out with any hands that might be raised for oral comments in, or communications rather, in the schoolhouse.
There are no hands raised.
Okay, online, I see.
Sorry, somebody raised their hand. As soon as I said, no hands raised, so, no worries, so come on up to the podium. Nah, it's all good. They didn't come up over here. And then make sure you press the button so you get the little red light, and then if you can tell us your name and what you'd like to talk about.
Hi, my name is Torrin. I'm 13 years old, and today I'm here because I care about our planet and sustainability. My mission is to make our town more sustainable through rainwater collection to irrigate crops. I have run a proof-of-concept test at home, and it's working really well. We are growing fruits and vegetables using rainwater. I am offering to set up this system for Portola Valley residences, residents. Anyone is welcome. Simply get in touch. I will come and set it up at your house for 100% free, and I'll also throw in a couple fruits and vegetables. I'm leaving all my contact information here for you. Thank you for your time. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you very much. We are not allowed to discuss it, but what I would do is ask you to leave your contact information with the town clerk so that if anyone listening in wants to take you up on your offer, they have a way to get in touch with you.
And then Judith, we were also handed a presentation, just a short few pages.
Okay.
So my question, Torrin, would you like this posted? Okay, so we'll see if we can post that as well.
Okay.
We may end up coming back to you for an electronic copy, but this is great. Thank you.
Okay. Is there any? If you could talk into the mic, please?
So there was a, Helen's asking whether she can ask a question. So are you looking for clarifying question?
We're not allowed to engage in discussion of a subject matter, but if it's a logistical question.
Yeah, a question and a brief response is allowed, but as the mayor mentioned, no discussion, but yeah, if there's a question to the presenter.
Thank you. So thank you for this, this is impressive. And just, just, you did, I just wanted to clarify and echo that there is no cost to residents. You're doing this, right? But you do have a GoFundMe. Like, okay, great. That was my only question. Thank you. I appreciate what you're doing.
Craig, is there anyone else in the schoolhouse?
There are no, I'm going to say this again, see if anything, there are no hands in the schoolhouse.
Okay.
There are lots of hands, but none of them are up.
All right, well, there's one up from Rita Comas online. Go ahead, Rita. I'm not hearing her.
Okay, just, I just got the unmute button, so thank you. You know, congratulations, I'm so glad that we have now a full-time clerk in our beautiful town. A couple of weeks ago, we had a fire, you know, grass fire on West Ridge and Cervantes, right next to a property that has not been, the grass has not been cut down. And I heard late this afternoon, there was a fire not too far from us in Los Altos Hills. But earlier today, I had sent a message to the town, to the fire department, to the wildfire committee and the emergency committee, just mentioning about, please put out signs. Or do we have signs that we can put out early for the Fourth of July worrying about, you know, fireworks that are illegal? But because we have just so much tinder right now on the ground in our town. And I received a wonderful update from Woodside Fire Department. They have about 30 signs, and they will be posting them everywhere, starting early next week. And so I just wanted to give that update since I did send that message out, but it is a worry. Fire season has started, and let's just do all we can do, not just for ourselves, but for our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Well noted. Kristi C. is next.
Yes, thank you. I was wondering if there's an update on the housing element and the surveys we're taking of the other properties beyond Dorothy Ford Park. I didn't hear an update on that, and the residents are curious. My second comment is the town has a fireworks ordinance. If anyone's caught with doing fireworks in our town, it's $10,000 fine. I noticed Redwood City has an ordinance that is up to $50,000, so maybe we want to relook at our ordinance. My other question is, is our sheriff aware of our ordinance? And what is the plan if the sheriff were to be called to a fireworks incident? Are they aware of our ordinance? And that, and I am concerned about the Los Altos Hills fire that's going on now, and any updates on that? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We are not agendized to discuss the housing-related items, but I do know that there is material on the website, and we'll take it under advisement to have an update in the future. I'm not seeing any other hands up online, and so I think we can move to the consent agenda. So I will take comments from the public on the consent agenda, if any. Are there any hands raised, Craig?
There are not.
Okay, and I see none online. So do any members of the council want to pull any of the consent agenda items for discussion? I'm not seeing anyone doing that, so if not, can we have?
No council members here.
Okay, and I do not. So I think we can have a motion to approve the consent agenda items.
So move?
I second it.
Okay, and we need a roll call vote?
Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hupdi?
Yes.
Councilmember Walter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0.
Great. All right, so we have many items on our regular agenda, which we're moving to now. And I know Tony is probably leading most of the first four discussion items. Tony, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, so I'll turn it over to you to lead us through, I guess, first in order, consideration of approving town committees' funding requests.
Correct.
And while you're getting ready, Catherine, consideration of approving means that at the end of the presentation, the discussion portion for 7A, we are going to look for a motion to approve. Is that correct tonight?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
So tonight, we're looking at the town committee funding requests? And currently, there are about 16 or 17 committees in support of the town. Historically, a handful, a little bit of a handful have activity that requires budget appropriation. I'm going to go through each committee's request, highlighting what it is that they're requesting for, and at the very last slide, it's going to have a schedule of what the total dollar amount is for '25, '26. So looking at the first, this is Conservation Committee. Their appropriations have fluctuated from year to year. This year, they're currently requesting $2,400. And their items are frog pond signage, education materials of $500, banners for 210, two lecture events at $400 apiece, broom pool refreshments, $100, and brochure reprints of $400, and table handouts of $400, totaling $2,410, which is a $685 increase from the previous year. Cultural arts, I understand that some members of the cultural arts committee that has been recommissioned will be here to speak tonight, so this item, this budget is just a carryover from the previous year, including amounts for the Summer Concert Series and PV Palooza, but my understanding is those will not be in the budget for next year, so, and will probably come back in the mid-year with a budget update for cultural arts, but they will be given an opportunity to speak tonight. Next up is emergency preparedness. On average, it's about $1,800 per year, and this is sand for sandbags. Obviously, if it's a wetter winter, we'll probably go over that amount, but like I said, this has been the average amount since 2021. Parks and Recreation, they're asking for $25,000. There's a bit of a, it's not clear, so last year, most of Parks and Recreation activity took place prior to the revised budget. So although we revised their number to 19,000, they had actually spent most of their money because it's the zots to tots. Now, that all happened prior to when we revised the budget, so they've actually spent 24/6 this year, so they're only asking for an increase of $400 from the previous year. But so it's not, you know, the math says 5,700. I just want to clarify the variance there. But they're asking for picnic-related expenses for the Friendly Pony Parties, Bay Area Face Painters Party with 360 Insurance, zots to tots, reimbursable expenses. They also have a court reservation system for their pickleball, which is $500, and then they've also included $500 for game nights. This year, I'm actually reallocating the zots to tots registration revenue to the Parks and Rec Commission to offset some of these expenses as well. So net for the general fund would be 17,000. Trails and Paths, Trails and Paths is asking for $10,000, and these are expenses related to the horse fair events. Geologic Safety is requesting 1,950. It's for printing, copying, scanning materials, speaker stipends for community meetings, and also they are going to be meeting with Cotton Shires, our contract engineer, to update the geologic and ground moving potential maps. So in total, the town committees are requesting 52,000, I'm sorry, 55,360, which is about $3,000 more than what was expensed in '24, '25. So that is the town committee budgets, and they return to council for questions and comments.
All right, who in the schoolhouse on the council has questions for Tony?
Why don't we start with Rebecca?
You said Cultural Arts is actually not asking for 14,000. Do we have an idea of what you're going to ask for?
I believe that's going to be part of their, when they come up to public comment. But I think it's going to be significantly less than 14,000.
Okay. Under Parks and Rec, could you explain a little bit more how the past five years, there was no intake of money, and now there is a revenue from zots to tots?
So the zots to tots was actually deposited into the general fund. So this year, I'm moving it from non-departmental, or actually it was in Parks and Rec, but it's actually for the zots to tots run, so I'm just tying up the revenue with the actual event.
Will that be going forward the same way in the future? Great. Any idea why Friendly Pony Parties is 2,500 with the picnic, and it's $3,000 with the horse fair? Is it a different amount of time, or?
Could be a different amount of time, could be more ponies, I mean, I don't know specifically.
I guess my main question is, what are we cutting? What is being cut in the general budget for us to be able to include 55,000 in committees?
My preliminary numbers include the 52,000, or I'm sorry, the 55,000, but that number is going to be adjusted with what the outcome is with Cultural Arts.
Okay, and then one other question was about conservation. Conservation has frog pond signage, education materials for $500. We do have a frog pond open space fund. Can that not be, go over there to get that paid for? We have a restricted fund.
Yes, but I believe that's for trail, for maintenance around the frog pond.
Oh, okay.
And that's, that's, that was a donation.
Yeah, I guess those are my main questions.
Okay, Mary?
I have no questions.
Craig?
I guess two questions. One on cultural arts. Help me understand the cultural arts budget versus PV Palooza. Well, no, but I mean, in terms of the budget, is, are they kind of the same number? And it's a question of who's?
So, yes, so cultural arts in the past, it was the Summer Concert Series and PV Palooza.
Okay, so in theory, that's wrapped into that 14,000 somehow. Okay.
But my understanding is now, that's now being handled independently.
Okay, got it. And then Frog Pond, is it possible to look at the donation to understand exactly what? Because it does feel it's sort of appropriate if we're spending money in Frog Pond, that if possible, to use the money that was donated. So do we know what the restrictions are on that? I mean, this is a little bit different than some of our ballot measures, which are very tightly prescribed.
I, we can, we can reach out to the donor and verify. I we can, we can reach out to the donor and verify if that's allowable.
Okay.
But like I said, my understanding is that 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 money is for maintenance. It's similar to the Open Space Fund, it's but it's, it is an open space road remnant.
Yeah.
Um so it's, I believe it is for maintenance around the Frog Pond.
Okay, I think that's all my questions for now.
Okay, uh Helen?
Um, thank you as always. Um, can I get clarification?
Yes.
Because the Frog Pond is actually, even though it's the road remnant, open space now. It's officially a separate, you know, separate parcels.
Correct.
So is this money going to the Frog Pond and not the road remnant, or is it going to?
It's the road remnant.
Um.
The the name of the fund is Frog Pond Open Space Road Remnant.
Got it, okay. Um, thank you for that clarification, um. This was not part of your presentation, but it was part of your staff report, oh, I might be jumping forward, sorry if I. There is, um and this was from twenty-four, twenty-five? For Sustainable Silicon Valley, thousand dollars, is that the next, the next item?
Yeah.
Sorry, okay, jumping forward, I didn't mean to, okay, um. Okay, and then echoing what other council members members have said, you know, can we use any of the UUT funds? Um but it sounds like we can't. Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Technically, the UUT that's in the general fund is funding general fund activities.
Yeah, thank you, those are my questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you, are there any hands up in the schoolhouse, Craig?
I have two speaker cards.
Okay, why don't you read them?
So the first one I have is Phil, Laura. So. Okay, fine, I have speaker card for Jerry as well. I just used yours because it was first on my staff. Welcome.
Welcome, thank you, good evening, everyone. Well, I'm here representing the Cultural Arts Committee. And we are members that are also a part of PV Palooza. And um as you know previously, we sponsored all the summer concerts. And when John Badger was our chairman, he he was our last chairman. He um had us working on Palooza. When it separated to a five oh one C three. Um it was working out easier for him to manage it, and so he also asked to take on the summer concerts. So that was a change for us as cultural arts. Um as you know, he has now resigned from our our committee. But I have our proposed budget for twenty-five, twenty-six that he, it says submitted by John Badger. But it's now my understanding, it didn't get formally submitted. So that's what I'd like to briefly discuss with you today. Um as I said, we are members of Palooza Foundation and Board. So we're not trying to take any money away from that, and we we know our community loves the concerts, so we're totally in support of it. But according to my records, John had wanted to submit a fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty dollar budget. And the PV Palooza and the summer concert line items add up to eleven thousand, one hundred dollars. What we are asking is if Cultural Arts Committee could please have. The three thousand dollars that would be remaining, the way he had written it before, it was fourteen thousand, four fifty, which would have given us. Three thousand, three fifty. But we would even be happy with just the three thousand from the fourteen thousand. And I did bring an extra copy, but you probably have it there, but I don't know if you have. The um what is Palooza and what is Cultural Arts, which we have because we're members of the committee. So that is our ask, we're hoping, we really want to continue offering um cultural artistic. Um the having the environment of our and climate and aura of our town. We wanna represent the arts, we have many, many authors here and artists and poets, we have a poet laureate that we're supporting. And we do many for the youth, which I I Ivy wants to speak with you. The last thing I'd like to say is, there was some talk that maybe Cultural Arts was not in existence, and that is not the case. Um we are, we have a a new set of co-chairs. We also have already taken in two new members, so we're alive and well. We really like to at least have three thousand dollars so we can do some of the activities we had planned. Thank you very much for hearing me.
Thank you, um Tony, you didn't have that information when you were working on this budget, so. Do you have a proposed way of analyzing that? I see her leaving a copy, but curious your your thoughts on process here.
I mean, I can, I can analyze it and, I mean, we're, the budget's not set in stone. Yeah, we still have, we still have another meeting, um.
Mm-hmm.
But um yeah, I mean, I was made aware of this on Tuesday.
Okay.
So um um I'd have to work it into um. The budget plan.
Okay, alright, are there any other hands in the schoolhouse, Craig?
Yeah, so we have a second speaker card from Phil, Laura. Sure, she's speaking on your behalf, I like, so so I can remove your speaker card, great, yeah, please come up, welcome.
Hello, my name's Ivy Margolis, I will be the um incoming chair for the Cultural Arts Committee. And um and it's a pleasure to be here tonight. Um so I want to give a little bit of perspective about, you know, introducing a little bit about Cultural Arts Committee. A little bit of history, what we've been doing and what we hope to do in the context of um our budget request. Um the Cultural Arts Committee is an old committee, we have been here with part of the town. What I understand since the, you know, the nineties. And um it has always been intended to be a a haven in town to for. Um for the artists, writers, musicians in town to create a space for people for exchange of ideas. And to foster a sense of cultural appreciation for the community and the the generations ahead of us. Um I think there has been a little bit of um. When, you know, when people talk about cultural arts, we think about PV Palooza, so. I'm actually on the Board of PV Palooza, I'm the Corporate Secretary for PV Palooza and helped to structure the foundation, PV Palooza Foundation, so I can. Provide a little bit um explanation on the distinction between the two. So two years ago, when we asked to essentially take the program of PV Palooza, which is the Monday Music Festival Independent. We took that opportunity to establish a nonprofit organization with a goal to promote music activities in this town. And they, since then, it's became very successful. And we have also assumed the summer series by wing-wing the foundation, PV Palooza Foundation. Now, that is distinct and different from many activities that we have, the Cultural Arts Com-. The Cultural Arts Committee for the Portola Valley had been doing prior to the PV Palooza Music Festival. For example, the Christmas Fair, um for example, you know, the Writers uh uh Series. All of these existed before PV Palooza, and I just want to, you know, remind everyone. And these are the programs have been very success, had been very successful, popular, and we still want to continue to. To with these programs, and that's the reason why we're requesting um the budget, that's one of the reasons. Another reason here is, the reason why I joined is I have a young son, who's seven-year-old. And um he is artistic, you know, and um. And we hope to put on future events that will encourage family with young children. Uh who are interested in the arts and give them opportunities to explore their interests. And hence, um you know, there will be budget needs for those programs. We're not requesting any for those program this year. Um because, you know, we want to make sure the first year, this is a transition year, that we take it um slowly and steady and have a successful year. Um so I hope that answers some of the questions, like I know Greg, you had about PV Palooza versus the cultural arts. And why we're receding the committee.
Thank you, um we're out of time, but that's been very helpful context. Okay, I'm assuming there's no one else in the schoolhouse with their hand up? Uh so I'll go. Okay. Uh.
Okay.
Yeah. Could you turn the mic off just so we don't get it, okay, thank you.
Alright, the first hand up online is uh phone number three oh five six, go ahead.
It it's just a clarification, it's Dana Breen and Tony clarified it about the Frog Pond. Um that 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 money is for the remnants, there are still eighty thousand dollars in pledges left. For that to go i- into that fund, once that land becomes part of the Frog Pond. And and becomes permanent open space. So, you know, it actually has some money in it and the the remnant needs to be mowed. And so I I hope that that can happen soon because we got money to pay for it, thank you.
Thank you, Dana, uh Patty Dudes is next.
Hi, um thanks for having me, I just wanna clarify a few things about Parks and Rec, I am the chair. Um first of all, Tony, thanks very much for um explaining those numbers, really appreciate you calling. Calling those things out. Second, um Rebecca, to answer your question about Friendly Pony Parties. Yes, they do have different packages that you can buy. So for instance, for the picnic, we have a petting zoo and one horse. Um which is a mini um fair, they probably have a different package. Um and third, I just wanna put a plug in for the picnic. As you can tell from the attendance at the Palooza. These types of events are really, really important for our community in bringing the residents together. Zots is a tradition, um the picnic is a lot of fun. Um the trivia nights that we've started organizing are um a blast, you should come out. And to make it even more exciting, Karen Hasky has promised. Um to bring back the dump tank this year for the picnic, so look forward to that, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, alright, Christie C is next.
Yeah, I just wanted to put in a plug for Cultural Arts that I really value seeing my community uh and listening to music. And I'd hate to see Cultural Arts not get what they need to bring our community together. So I am for the three thousand for that, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I'm not seeing any other hands raised online. So we can bring it back uh to the council. Uh Helen, do you wanna get started on any uh discussion that you have?
Um, sure. So first, I'm gonna start by commenting that I'm concerned that there's no money for wildfire prep committee. Um you know, uh we do, that's a safety issue and that's a safety committee. And there's nothing budgeted for that committee, um I'd love to see like twenty-five hundred or three thousand for some flyers and printing and door-to-door. Um situation to try to who get our the three neighborhoods that do not have firewise communities. We're gonna need to do some outreach to those um to those three communities and and some organization. So we're gonna probably need some money there. Um Trails and Path for ten thousand um to the Horse Fair, I'm concerned about that. Um I absolutely support the Cultural Arts and the um. And the Cultural Arts and the Parks and Rec. Um I and I feel like those two committees really serve a broad sector of the community. Um Trails and Path, God bless horses, I love horses, I miss having been around horses, I think that's um not as broad of community. And I, so I would like to see that budget um smaller, actually. Um in terms of the Conservation Committee, I do feel that the Frog Pond should be protected, the road remnant, I do feel like is being privatized. Um and it's public land, so I'm very con- concerned about that, we did not uh uh, you know, our policy for donations is. Is um to ex- to direct um uh the donate, you know, to. Support a donation, to ask for donation, I don't, I'm not saying it very clearly. Um so I'm concerned about turning that public land and privatizing it. Um so I am concerned about that, so thank you, those are my comments.
Okay, Craig?
Um, so yeah, I'm I'm generally supportive which here, I I find this PV Palooza Cultural Arts thing confusing, but. Are we just assuming that it's fourteen thousand dollars all in and however it gets divided up? Or it's fourteen thousand plus another three?
No, they're requesting three, so it's fourteen minus eleven.
Okay, but I thought they were saying that the PV Palooza and summer concerts was only eleven.
That's the, it's a now, it's now a five oh one C three, it's running those or events.
Um, well, what's the fourteen?
Again, this was just a carryover from the prior year, not understanding where cu- Culture Arts was, but now it's. PV Palooza and Summer Concerts is now o- operating under a five oh one C three, so. The PV Palooza costs and the summer concert series costs are not needed in this budget.
Got it.
But they are asking for about three thousand for other.
Got it.
Events.
So we we don't um put any money into PV Palooza and the summer concerts now?
We will not be doing that for next year.
Okay, good, that was my confusion, okay, um. So, yeah, I'm sorry, it's just, we're, it's back to the council now, I mean, I I appreciate, but you can't take public comments in the middle of the council discussions. Um but afterwards, if you could email me, that would be helpful, just so I understand. Um, so then, I'm okay with the three thousand. I, I guess I'm disappointed to see we don't have any money for the volunteer appreciation. Um I think the volunteers are kind of the heart of what we do and. You know, I I'm okay with it not being a fully catered thing, but nothing, I mean, we didn't do anything last year and and I was disappointed we didn't do anything last year, I think it's. And I, it's a, it's a rare opportunity for all the volunteers in town um to get together. So I guess what I'm wondering is if we had some sort of hot lock. What are our costs just for, you know, using the town center, cleanup, that kind of stuff, I mean, is that on the order of thousand dollars? Do you have a sense for what those costs are, if it, assuming we're not, you know, getting professional kitchen staff and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, I mean, it would be the cost to to rent the space, if it's at Community Hall, the main room, or if it's. On one of the fields, I mean, yeah, that's, I mean, that would be.
Presumably, it's not, we don't have to rent it, we just have to do the maintenance, the cleanup, etc., right, so. But but I mean, if that were on order of a thousand dollars, do you feel like that would cover those kind of costs?
Right, but it would be basically just staff time. Like I I don't have to budget that expense into volunteer appreciation. It's just staff time. I mean, otherwise, otherwise, I'm just gonna have to written like, okay, this this employee did five hours.
Yeah, I guess I wasn't thinking so much the employees, I think more like, if we have an extra set of janitors come in to clean up, for instance.
Right, but again, I would have to reallocate the cost from where it's where it's currently being paid out of to here.
Okay, so you're saying that we could do that without allocating anything?
It's diminished.
Okay, great, um alright, I'm I'm comfortable with that.
Okay, is that it, Craig?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, uh Mary?
I'm comfortable with this, the town committee funding.
And Rebecca?
So um. Kind of when I look ahead for when we get to the budget discussion, but it, right now, we're looking at a hundred and fifty thousand dollar um potential. Deficit for next year, so I know there's discussions about getting that down and reducing it and hopefully we will. So I I have to be very mindful of um the consequences that our budget is still constrained. Um our service levels are less than optimal, our staff is is tight. Um, their bandwidth is not as, you know, it's not high because we were missing staff. So, I I I really feel like the message needs to get out to everyone. That, you know, we can kind of scrape by next year, but the following year, we absolutely are going to have to do something to raise revenues. And that probably means some type of tax, so I I feel that we need to give that message out a little more and one way to do that is to slightly cut some of these budgets. I also recognize that these events that our volunteers put on are so amazing and incredible and they bring the community together and they're so vital for creating community. Um, so it's important that we continue to make them happen. But I'm kind of on the side that um you know, maybe we need to do a little bit of a line item and say, you know, conservation, maybe you're gonna have to make do with fewer table handouts or um you know, I, you know, maybe we just cut a little bit there. Cultural arts, it would appear that it's now three thousand dollars instead of fourteen thousand, so that's great. We've cut eleven thousand right there, assuming that's the case. Because I I'm a little, again, unclear whether PV Palooza needed us to contribute some for the summer concert series. No, okay. So three, you know, three thousand sounds great for the amount of activities that cultural arts is thinking about doing, so we are cutting right there, eleven thousand. Emergency prep, we need the sand, so there's nothing there. Parks and Rec, um again, I I think it's a lot of money to spend on a picnic. Um, and I feel that maybe the community needs to contribute a little bit and donate a bit, so you know, I might knock off a couple thousand from the picnic. Um, and then if people in the community really want face painting or pony parties or whatever, then maybe they will think about contributing, you know, hundred, two hundred, three hundred dollars just to make up the gap. Um, I mean, I I even look at this, do we really need so many tables and chairs and plastic um tablecloths? You know, maybe we make do with less and tell everybody to bring their own chair. I mean, just little things like that. I mean, it does add up after a while, so, you know, can they make this happen if we knocked off a couple thousand? Now, I'm sure they could. These are very creative people. We have very generous people in town. I'm sure we could still have a fantastic picnic if we just tighten our belt just a teeny bit. Um, trails and paths, the same thing. I mean, the horse fair was very successful. Um, I wasn't able to go to it because I was out of town, but um, people spoke highly of it. And again, maybe we need to just cut a couple thousand off of that, and if people want all of these um services at the picnic, you know, maybe they just ask for some contributions to help make the event how they envision it. Let's see, geological safety, they're not asking for very much. Um, I think it's the meeting with Cotton Shires, um it would appear to be based kind of on an hourly rate, I would assume, working with their geol- the the town geologists, so I think it'll be critical that we keep an eye on how many hours they generate. Um, just to make sure that that doesn't go out of whack. And then I, you know, I feel like um what was the comment that someone made? Oh, the potluck for volunteer appreciation. I know I've been talking to Mark a long time about that. And my understanding that with Parks and Rec was actually gonna take on um the potluck. So that would probably kind of solve the volunteer appreciation because it is important that we recognize so many fantastic volunteers we have in town, so that doesn't really add much in the way of costs to us. And then in terms of budget for firewise, um I think that's gonna kind of come up more when we get to the safety cons- conversation, so I'm I I don't feel the need for that right this minute because we are paying quite a bit to the fire department to provide a lot of education to the community, so I would hold off on that, on adding more to the, to to wildfire. Um, so that's kind of my idea. I mean, I would just cut a little bit out of every, out of s- some of the committees and you know, we tighten our belt.
So through the mayor, um is now a good time to comment on Rebecca's comment, or do you wanna go and then we'll circle back around? Judith, I think you muted.
I had noise outside. Thank you. I would like to make my comment and then we'll circle around if anyone has you know, further comments, given the, what they've heard, uh that will, I'll make sure that we do that. Um, so I'm comfortable with this as is, bottom line. And um I do take the points, um we're not trying to solve the whole budget in this particular item and we're gonna get a uh an ability to look at the budget as a whole soon. Um, I'd love to see the volunteer appreciation. Uh, it's not in the budget. It shouldn't be part of this discussion, but um, I think all of us are missing that and it's important. The last thing I'll say is, uh, the committees have, I think, put together reasonable budgets uh based on history. Um, I I wanna defer to their asks, um if they feel these amounts are what they wanna achieve. Uh, there's a certain amount of morale that I I wanna recognize that that they're working well together to make these um proposals and uh these are um modest amounts, so I think that, you know, Tony's done a good job the way he put it together from my perspective. Um, so now I'll turn it back to Craig and then others can make further comments.
Thank you. So, I definitely wanna echo that we need to tighten up the budget. I also don't necessarily wanna put that on the backs of volunteer organizers that you have. So, I'd like to suggest maybe a slight alternative, Rebecca, to what you're suggesting, which is I mean, what if we ask each of these committees to try to tighten up their budget and report back what they did? And if they can do that by raising some private funds and saying, hey, look, we raised this and this is how we did it. But but rather than us just sort of unilaterally cutting, you know, two or three thousand and saying, you figure it out later. I mean, why don't we just ask them to do their best to tighten their budgets? Um, and and have them appreciate, you know, the the gravity of the situation. Because I I generally trust our volunteers and it feels to me like that's a better way of not sort of boxing them in, but giving them the opportunity to figure out what they can save. And I'm okay asking them to report back, you know, and say, you know, tell us what you did, you know, like what, how did you save us money in the last year? Um, I think that that feels better to me, a little more positive. Um, so I don't know what you think about that is is maybe take this budget as it is, but then, you know, ask them for this, you know, tighten up the budget and report back.
I I think it's a reasonable idea. Um, again, I again, I, the message needs to get out that the town doesn't have a ton of money and some of these budgets are higher than they were last year, so yes. Um, but again, the town is gonna ask for money in a couple of years, in a year and a half, so just be aware that these are the sorts of things that, you know, we, of course, we don't wanna do it back on the on the backs of our community and what pulls the community together, but you know, if we don't raise that money, we will not have picnics, we will not have horse fairs, we will not have cultural arts, we will probably, it'll be, it'll be a struggle to even get sand. I mean, so I think people need to be aware of that.
Well, eh, for what it's worth, I think we're conflating two different issues. Both of which are important. One is the budget here for the committees after, that has already gone through their proposals. The other is getting the word out and I completely agree with you. Like, that should be a project unto itself, uh probably not not directly connected to this particular aspect of the budget from my perspective, but um, I agree that communicating uh broadly uh is part of what we need to be doing. Um, I would just not do it through this means. Um, Mary and Helen, anything else?
Oh, I I had a couple of things. Um I was wondering to what extent we can use the PV fund for uh for donations because I, for example, the uh the horse fair, all of the exhibitors put in three hundred dollars to get the insurance that the uh that the town requires. We don't submit that. The uh making of the uh puppets and things was all done volunteer. They weren't submitted. Uh, we, a lot of expenses have been taken care of by individuals and they shoulder the liability and they offer themselves and their animals in public. And uh I think they would feel better if they would, they could at least have somewhere they could be recognized. Um, and I certainly think it's not good for morale to start saying, well, you know, it it wasn't an important event. This is something we started with the fiftieth uh anniversary and uh we've done it every year for the last ten years. Um, and it's been a huge community service. Anyway, I'd like to see if we could use the PV fund.
Yes, um, I just wanted to clarify Mary's question first. Mary, are you saying not for this budget, but in the future?
Yeah, it's a message. I think the the budget they, people ask for what uh what the real costs are and they end up not spending these budgets largely. Uh, but they want to have it sort of be recognized that they are giving these amounts to the town.
Okay, okay. Tony?
I think of you.
I wanna, I wanna go back to the PV fund. PV fund is independent. He can't direct PV fund to do anything unless it's a town-approved project. And so I just wanna, I mean, if
I hear you.
Because it's, it, it's gonna be overwhelming for PV fund.
Yeah.
So, I mean, they have to be part of this conversation.
Thank you, Tony. Uh, good reminder. Uh Helen, Helen, did you have anything?
I do, thank you. Um, so, uh, you know, I actually do think it's important to send a message that we need to tighten our belt. Um, I do like the idea that could, uh, council or vice mayor. Okay, Taylor brought up. I do like that idea, but I also looking at the recommendation of approved funding so that we can't because our budget is due soon, um approved funding, if, do we want to and Tony, maybe you can help guide this. Um, do we want to set a goal of say instead of spending fifty-five, fifty-four thousand or if, um, I'm not sure that's quite right because of the changes with the cultural arts committee, um, but setting a goal of fifty thousand or forty-five thousand that we would like to spend this coming year and we'd love our committees to meet that, meet the day, right? Um, kind of idea. So, and maybe Tony can help guide the goal. Like, obviously, the recommendation was to approve it at fifty-four thousand, so I'd love to hear your recommendation.
Right, so reducing cultural arts from fourteen to three, that takes it down to forty-four. Uh, three sixty, which is significantly less than the four previous fiscal years. Um, so that, that's in the right direction in regards to spending less. Uh, but um I also believe that community events are important. Um, and, uh, because they they bring everybody together and uh kind of shows the 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 values of this town. Um, and I, I, but not to discount, I mean, but approaching PV fund and saying, could this be an avenue where, you know, that's one thing we can do. Um, but yeah, and also to echo what Councilmember Flynn is saying and we'll touch on this on a topic down uh later this evening, is yes, you know, the there are gonna be budget challenges over the next few fiscal years and there could be a time I come with a budget, the town committees get nothing. And the nonprofits get nothing, um, because we have to keep our money within the town of this, you know, to keep operations running. Um, so, but, you know, just the one change to cultural arts does bring the amount down lower than it has been in the pre- previous four fiscal years.
Thank you.
So, um, if I could just ask one final thing, I mean, what if we approved the budget as as um posted here, Tony, minus the eleven thousand that's gonna show from cultural arts? And that we put an ask into all of the committees to go talk to the PV fund to see if they can raise money? Just leave it kind of it in their hands. Does that seem like a reasonable way of getting the message out that we need to be frugal? Um, without sort of diddling too much with the budget?
Well, the I think it's probably The fund, they started it with town-approved projects.
Right.
So it's, it's, it would be, if if that's the direction council wants to go, then it's council making the the decision that, hey, let's solicit PV fund to help with this situation, which they probably will help. But it's, I I I don't think we should just open it up to anybody to go run to PV fund and say, hey, we're gonna, we wanna raise funds for this project and we have no idea what project they're talking about.
Well, yeah, I I have a procedure.
I, I have to say, uh, wait, wait a moment, Mary, please. I have to say that we have to be careful, PV fund is still working out and we are working out with them the process for making that work smoothly. Um, I think it could could be not a good use of their time right now to to get many requests. Um, and so I'm I'm underscoring uh Tony's point uh from a practical well, lab processes up and running and and better known in a while and um I think we'll have that as a better-known tool and more predictable as to timing tool than we have today. Uh, go ahead, Mary.
I just had a process. Are we voting on the each component of this or are we voting on the final and how's that working out?
You're voting on the total funding request for this, for town committee?
For just town committees?
Right. Each, Mary, each of these items is separately agendized, so
Great.
First, we defunding, then we move to none for now is
I move that we approve the town committee's budget.
Okay.
Subject to the change in the cultural arts?
Yes, subject to the change, the eleven thousand reduction.
I would second that.
I'm sorry, could you tell us the total again, one more time, the new total?
It'll be, it'll be forty-four, three sixty.
I'd, I'd like to amend that just to send a note to the committees, asking them to try to tighten the belt a little bit.
Do you accept that amendment, Mary?
I, well, I I prefer not to because I think the committees need to know that we're all for their hard work.
Yeah.
And, and that they're, they're, you know, they're putting in their own time. They're putting in
Okay, Mary? Procedurally, let me, let me ask for a vote on Mary's motion and second. Yes?
Before we take that, I'd like to offer another uh motion, please. I believe you can do two motions, right? At once?
Uh, there can, there can be multiple motions on the floor. Um, this, the Mary's motion, I believe, did have a second. Is that correct?
Yes.
So we have one motion on the floor, um and yes, you could offer a a additional motion. Um, I I also wanna clarify that under Rosenberg's rules of order, um, you can actually have up to three motions on the floor, although I don't recommend it because it gets confusing. Uh, and motions are considered in reverse order, so um if uh if you, if your motion gets a second, then that would be the first motion that would be voted on and then if it fails, we would go back to Mary's motion.
So what I would um like to motion actually is to approve funding for town committee budget requests on the mountain not to exceed the forty-four thousand and change uh with the friendly amendment from Councilmember Flynn um to ask the committees to tighten their belts. Thank you.
I second.
Okay, so we'll vote, a roll call vote on uh Helen's uh motion.
Councilmember Flynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Hefty?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Haskell?
No.
Motion carries for one.
Okay, um, alright, we're going on to the second point on nonprofit funding. Tony, back to you. I'm sorry, if anyone's talking, I can't hear you.
No, I, I was just, we, we had some members of the public that were talking and I was just letting them know we could hear them. So they were being apologetic, so they're
Thank you.
Yep.
So basically, I'm just doing the schedule for this one. In your packet was breakdown of each organization and what their purposes are for and how much they're asking for. In the twenty five, twenty six budget, the asks total almost twenty five thousand. I'm requesting or recommending that we fund seventy percent of that. Reason being that although these nonprofits do provide services within the town, they also provide services with, throughout San Mateo County and Silicon Valley. So I, I kinda still wanna keep our money within the town. But but as I said, it's twenty five thousand was proposed, I'm proposing seventy percent funding, which is a little under eighteen thousand. But again, council can elect to choose the whole twenty five or say some, we don't need to do this. We did not, we did fund seventeen thousand last year. But most of the nonprofits did not get funding because their requests came in after we balanced the budget. So they, those requests were, those payments were denied. So, brief presentation, just like I said, in the, in the staff report, you did have a breakdown of each organization. And, and as I said, we're, they recommend, they proposed twenty five, we're recommending less than eighteen. So that's my brief presentation. Back to council for questions and comments.
Thank you, Tony. Okay, so let's go to questions for Tony. Helen, do you wanna start or do, are you ready?
Oh yeah, I'm happy to start. I just have one question, two questions, actually. Did you, so did these nonprofits request funding? Or is it just assumption that they had requested?
We receive invoices annually and it's asking for contribution. Some we do, like Heart and Hip and Epic. But the Sustainable San Mateo County, Sustainable Silicon Valley, they send us an invoice and they'll have some backup as regards to what they're doing for the fiscal year. But yeah, these are, these are solicitations we receive on an annual basis.
Got it. Okay, thank you. I mean, and you did get an invoice from Sustainable Silicon Valley? Because they've become part of Actera now, this is why I'm confused. Did you get an invoice from Actera by any chance?
Oh yeah, they did change, yeah.
Okay.
No, the website changed, yeah.
Yeah, Dennis Murphy. Okay.
Historically, it's been Sustainable Silicon Valley.
Right, okay, thank you for clarifying. Okay, those are my questions, thank you.
Hey, Craig?
No questions.
Hey, Mary?
I, I think I've asked this every year, is this standard practice that all towns are grant making organizations to out, outside, not for profits?
Yes, they're, and coming from the nonprofit world, yes, we do submit solicitations to cities.
You solicit the cities.
And say, you know, hey, we're providing this service within your city, can you give us a thousand or two thousand dollars? But yeah, this is a standard practice for cities.
I guess the question is, to what extent is there a quid pro quo going on here?
For Meals on Wheels, they, they provide meals to seniors in town throughout San Mateo County. This is, they're just asking for assistance with them, operational support.
That's fine.
I guess my question is, you're recommending seventy percent? How did you derive that?
Well, we, twenty three, twenty four, that was the practice as well, we reduced. But again, like I said, it's, although these nonprofits or non-governmental organizations do tremendous work throughout the county, I feel that we need to keep our money within the town first.
I don't have any questions, so we can open it up for public comment. Are there any public comments in the schoolhouse? Any hands raised?
There are not.
Okay. I'm looking, I'm gonna start with Mary this time.
Well, I like the not for funding request heading best. It seems to me if we really are interested in cutting our expenses, we're not a grant making organization. If we were a grant making organization, we really should put that out to the vote of the people. It's, it's the public comment I heard about this item. And I am in favor of not doing this section at all.
Okay, Rebecca?
When I look at the list, there's quite a few that are important. Epic, for example, I believe funds our community, it used to be called SERP, which is the line above it. So it helps fund our Community Emergency Response Preparedness Program. I can't imagine anything more important than that in our town. I certainly would want to continue supporting them, which we've been doing for over twenty five years, I believe. At the five thousand dollar level. Hip Housing plays a critical role for helping seniors who don't have reliable housing to find a shared housing opportunity. I think it, it's important for Portola Valley to support that organization. The same thing, Heart, I just actually met one of the people who works at Heart. They provide a lot of services for keeping people in their homes. I think it's important that Portola Valley support that effort. We're not all, not everybody who lives in Portola Valley is privileged and wealthy. There are quite a few people that spend more than fifty percent of their income on their housing. Actually fifteen percent of the households in town spend that. I have to admit, I don't know what Joint Venture Silicon Valley does. Meals on Wheels are critical, we have quite a few seniors in home and in town that make use of that, particularly during the pandemic, it was critical for them. Well, the conflict resolution is not asking for money. And then, since we didn't create a priority this year for sustainable, sustainability, it's, you know, we're, we're suggesting spending twelve fifteen. I think that's a pretty minor amount and I would support that. I think keeping the planet safe is pretty critical to all our lives. I'm not familiar with Cora. But obviously, it's providing a service to the community. So I would support the, the seventy percent.
Okay. Going over now to Helen.
So these, you know, societally, a couple things, Portola Valley, like, we don't host San Mateo County Hospital. We don't host the jails, we don't host the Navigation Center for the Homeless Folks. We have a, you know, and that's where a lot of our tax dollars go to, as it is. But a lot of times, we don't, you know, societally, we don't have very good social safety nets. And that's where our nonprofits come in to play. So I absolutely support a lot of these, you know, the Epic, Hip, Housing, Heart. I absolutely support the seventy percent level. Joint Venture Silicon Valley, they're, yeah, they do a lot of research that helps. Meals on Wheels, I fully support. I'm not familiar with Peninsula Conflict Resolution Center, so they didn't ask for money, it looks like. Sustainable San Mateo County, you know, they do great research for our county about areas, you know, who, asthma rates in different communities. Sustainable Silicon Valley, that's now Actera, has great classes. If anyone is trying to figure out how, like, how to buy an electric vehicle, totally recommend their classes. I took one, I couldn't figure it out. They also really help with water shortages, so I support, you know, seven hundred dollars to them. Cora is a fantastic, fantastic organization for women and men dealing with relationship abuse. So I'm right there with Councilmember Flynn, thank you.
Okay. Tony, I, I was taking some notes earlier when Mary raised her question. And if I could just ask it in a slightly different way, do, how unusual would it be for a city not to contribute at all?
It's not unusual, I mean, it's, if our, our budget constraints dictate, then the city can say no, no nonprofit funding requests for this year.
Okay, okay. And Craig, I'm sorry, I meant, didn't mean to get in front of you.
No, no, no worries, son. I, I knew you'd come back to me. So I did have one question with Cora, at least on here, the allocated is a hundred percent.
Yes.
And you made that decision because?
Well, they work in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department. And it's, it was a cost that the Sheriff's Department was paying up until a couple of years ago. So that cost, I mean, it's, I don't wanna say obligated, but it's a cost that we should pay.
Okay, I mean.
No, it's, it's not quid pro quo, it's, it's, they're providing a service through the Sheriff's Department. And it's not, it's not a solicitation from the other nonprofits, it's, they're actually providing the service.
And, and you're suggesting that this is sort of part of the Sheriff's contract?
Yes.
We all think is.
So, that's, yeah, that's a whole other topic.
I know, I have more information about Cora if you need, like.
Sure, you wanna go?
Yeah, I mean, it's the type of thing that when, you know, I, like, I have a personal friend who, you know, middle of the night needed to get out of a situation and she ended up at Cora. If that helps, so they provide beds and twenty four hour.
Sure, I understand what Cora is. I, I'm, I'm understanding that, I was just trying to figure out why we did seventy percent on everybody except Cora, we did a hundred. So that, it was that discrepancy that I was asking about. And so you're suggesting this is somehow indirectly related to Sheriff's contract?
Yeah, cause the sheriff passed the cost on to us.
Okay, I, I mean, I find that frustrating, but the Sheriff's contract in general, I find frustrating, so I, I don't think that's, that's gonna change very much. So I'm generally, I mean, I'm sympathetic to what Mary said about grant making. On the other hand, I, I think we all, and I, I know Mary as well, I think we're charitable people. And I think that this is, like, Epic, I think, is critical for what we do in the town. And if you, if you subtract Epic out, then you're down sort of ten, eleven thousand dollars. That, that's not what's gonna make or break our budget in the next two years. I, I mean, and so I would be willing, I, I think we should just accept, I appreciate that we've cut it back a little bit and I think that's appropriate given where we are, but I also think that we can continue to be charitable. So I'm comfortable with continuing with this budget as proposed.
Okay. Yeah, Tony, I do appreciate you cutting it back by seventy percent. I, I think at this point, at this level, if we were to not provide any funding here, it would be very out of character for the town. And, you know, it's a different way of Craig saying we're charitable people. We are within reason. I'm not sure why we're being forced to be charitable to the sheriff. I, I love the program, to be clear, but this line item approach concerns me and in the future, I'll wanna look at that. But right now, I'm comfortable with the recommended amount here of seventeen nine sixty two.
And, and if I can add, the reason I also had recommend a seven, seventy percent is, it could be consistent with what we've been funding over the previous fiscal years.
Thank you.
Through the, through the chair, could I make a further comment?
Yes.
I, I wanna make it abundantly clear that I personally am in full support of all these organizations. I personally do support and I think people in town should support them. And I just don't think that the taxpayer should be paying us to make the decision on our, on the basis of our values. In the situation where we're going out for a tax, for a further tax. You, you really, maybe you might consider it next year, cause it did come up last year, it, it did come up the year before. But I think it's not looking good, and I would like to say it in public, that it doesn't look good to the people who are gonna be taking our advice on getting a tax increase.
Fair comment. Thank you for that, Mary. Well, I'm, may, does someone wanna make a motion?
I can. I'd like to make a motion to support these nonprofits, not for profits, at the recommended amount of seventeen thousand nine hundred and sixty two.
I'd second that.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Flynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Hefty?
No.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Motion carries for one.
Okay. Alright, moving on to the next item, which is General Fund Minimum Balance Policy. And it looks like there's a recommendation to amend the general fund and Tony's gonna lead us, the minimum balance policy. And Tony will lead us through that.
So in July of two thousand and eleven, town of Portola Valley adopted a general fund, minimum fund balance policy of sixty percent of operating expenses. And at the time, expenses were about three million. Though, but part of the process was GFOA best practices, was also a very conservative minimum fund balance policy. In the beginning parts of this fiscal year, the Finance Committee was tasked with several assignments. One was to review the general fund, minimum fund balance policy. Two members formed a working group, they did a couple of presentations. Their first recommendation was to have a, set a fixed number, a range of, up from twenty five to sixty percent and have the reserve operating within that level. But in the April twenty two Finance Committee meeting, they reviewed this con, this, this topic. And although their, their initial recommendation was to main the reserve at a range of twenty five to fifty percent, with twenty five percent being a hard floor, the Finance Committee did recommend that the Town Council amend the current policy to state that the general fund minimum unrestricted fund balance shall be maintained at or above twenty percent of annual general fund expenditures. And so that is what's being brought to council tonight. Maintaining a sixty percent minimum fund balance reserve creates a completely different budget strategy. Instead of, I would have to draft a budget or a financial plan to get us back to the sixty percent reserve, which would require significant draconian cuts over the next four to five years to get us back up to four million, or three to four million of our reserve. So adopting a twenty percent does give the town more flexibility. Also, the twenty percent is less than what our estimated Also, the twenty percent is less than what our estimated fund balance is at the moment. So this also gives us additional flexibility should we need to deficit spend uh in order to provide the services that the town needs. So that concludes my report. I turn it back to council for comment concerning questions.
Thank you. Uh, Craig, do you want to get us started with questions?
Um, I don't have any questions.
Okay, um, let's see. Mary, do you have any?
No.
Sounds good to me.
Okay, Rebecca?
Um, yeah, I, I did have a question. So when I kind of look at the numbers here, you're saying that twenty percent of our this year's budget would come out to one point four something. Um, I don't have it right in front of me, but.
Yeah, so the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, that would be a little bit, little bit under one point five million would be the floor. And we're at two point two. So we have, we have a gap of seven hundred thousand.
Say that again, sorry.
Yeah, so our current estimated unrestricted fund balance as of April is two point two million.
Okay.
We adopt, or we balance the budget with expenditures at seven point five. So that means the floor reserve is one point five million. We, if we go below that, then we would be in violation of this twenty percent policy.
Okay.
But since we're at two point two million, we are in compliance with the policy. Plus, and this was, this was an important note for the Finance Committee, gives us some flexibility if we have to go deficit spend to provide the services that we need.
Okay, um, and do you anticipate that April twenty twenty-five to change dramatically by the time we get to the end of the fiscal year?
It may go down, maybe a hundred thousand, um, but it's going to be around that number.
So this is, I mean, I, I think it's a good idea to definitely lower the reserve. But I do want to express a little concern, because when I look at, we'll get to this in the next presentation. I guess, yeah. I just want to confirm that the, that, that the estimated deficit for twenty-two, twenty-three was one point four six five million. So how would we, if we somehow encountered this problem again, whatever reason, how would it, how would we deal with a, a deficit that got that big? When we have, you know, a floor of only one point four that we were.
Well, I have been presenting to the Finance Committee our monthly, I do a monthly finance update. And, yeah, part of that is where are we with the budget? Um, but it also is where are we with our unrestricted fund balance, and how does that compare to the policy? So we are increasing monitoring each month, and so it, but I would not bring a budget to the council that says, oh, by the way, we're going to deficit spend one point five million.
Okay, so we're, okay. Okay, that's, that's my question. Thanks.
And, but then if there is an unforeseen circumstance, yes, that will be brought to the council's attention immediately.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Helen, questions?
Yep, uh, so I am curious what you recommend. You know, our Finance Committee is recommending twenty percent. Previously, it, it was at sixty percent.
They wanted to go lower. I, I, I said I, I want at least two commas in our reserve. I want at least a million dollars.
Okay.
And, but, and that was just a comfort level for me. I'm okay with twenty percent.
Okay, because you had recommended to them twenty-five percent?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, you also gave this, um,
But GFOA, it's a range between ten and thirty percent.
Okay, um, and you gave us this article. I didn't get to read all of it. I got to read some of it that, and it talks about qualitative versus quantitative, and, you know, Berkeley did qualitative, God bless Berkeley. And um, the quantitative is based on, you know, recession and based on flooding and hurricanes and fires, right?
Right.
So did, was any of that used?
No, that is just for your edification, because that's going to be a process that we're going to be going down, is really looking at our reserve, because we don't have any contingency planning for those events. So this was just to broaden everybody's horizon on how we should be looking at our reserves.
Well, that, and that was my question. So we came up with the reserve number because of what you're comfortable, the GFAO recommendation between ten and thirty? So kind of, we didn't use any, like, hey, worst case scenario, town hall burns down, we're going to have to replace it. What do we need? How much do we need, kind of thing?
Without reducing it, I, as I stated, the budget plan would be significantly different. Where it would be, I would have to cut five to six hundred thousand. I have to come up with a spending plan to get us back to the sixty percent.
Right.
And that's just not feasible.
Yeah, that's, yeah, okay.
So, yeah, so it was, and, and, I mean, they did review GFOA, the, the, also included the working paper that the Finance Committee um did include, and it, it, they did do GFOA best practices. But this article, I think it's, it's, this is going to be, we got a, it's a, an update to what they were previously looking at.
Okay, got it. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay, I only have a couple. Um, one is, uh, what, just to state it more simply, what is a standard range for Bay Area uh minimums uh that you have seen? I'm sure you've checked.
I don't have off the top of my head, but other than what GFOA best practices are.
Okay, okay.
Some are, it's just a two-month minimum as well.
Um, and there's two more questions, and these are more ministerial. One, uh, the, the old reserve or the recommendation was twenty-five percent, sixty percent as a range, but now it's open-ended, it's twenty percent or more. Do you know the driver for not having a range?
Well, it's twenty percent is, is the floor.
Right.
But the, it, they didn't make sense to have an upper range when we're barely going to be above twenty percent. You know, so they, I mean, they, they thought about it, but they, as a, as a body, they just said, no, we'll just go with the floor. Um, and then we could come back and revisit once, once we, once we attain some long-term financial sustainability, we can come back to the reserve and we can put a cap or a ceiling.
Yeah. Yeah, uh, uh, just to explain the, the thought process here, it's a little odd that this creates the possibility it could go up to eighty percent. Like, it's not what we all will do or intend, but um, but that's fine. We can revisit it, as you say, when, when things get more certain. And then they went from annual to quarterly. Um, is that going to increase a burden on you, or, or what, what's your thought about that change?
We're, I'm doing it monthly. Quarterly is just, you know, gives me, gives me some breathing room. Um, there could be some months where, I mean, because their, their, their meetings are not regularly scheduled. So there could be a time, they could have a meeting, and I don't have the month done yet. So quarterly, um, but again, and also as we finalize all the audits and we get our, our cash balances aligned and all our other balances aligned, there will be a treasures report coming to the council on a monthly basis. That I hope to have, go through the Finance Committee as well.
Okay, um, I mean, it's, it's, reading between the lines, it seems to me, they just wanted to tighten up the discipline and not let it get to a whole year. So for you is, is what I'm hearing, correct?
Well, it was a question they were asking at every. So I, 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 when we, um, I'm drawing a blank on the task that we did, but it, it, it caught us caught up with current year.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thanks. Those are my questions. Uh, so at that point, I'll.
I have, I have one more question, Judy.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
So just to kind of distinguish between general fund unassigned, in that two point two million, a million is the unassigned, and then we actually have the rest of it, one point one, one point two was perhaps is assigned, but is it correct that it's, it's not due, but it's more just safety, insurance?
Set aside for those purposes. But GAZB fifty-four, those, those levels can be reassigned every year by council.
And right now, I think you've told me in the past that that assignment is quite a bit lower than what we actually might owe on some of them. I'm talking especially the UAL and the OPEB. Is that correct, or?
Don't think this is part of the topic.
Well, I've.
Because, I mean, I, I don't have that in my staff report.
Right, yeah.
And it is in the next item. But yes, like, we have some funds set aside for the pension liability. It is lower than what the actual pension liability is.
I'm just, yeah, I don't want to start discussing. Okay, all right, thanks.
Is that a no?
I think she's done.
Did you ask something? Yeah, no, I'm finished. Thanks.
Right, I was asking if there's anything raised in the schoolhouse.
No, there are no hands raised in the schoolhouse.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any online, so um, we're going to come back to a discussion. I think, uh, Mary, do you want to get us started?
Well, uh, I'm feeling good about this. It seems reasonable. I, I tend to be conservative about reserves, but I, I think this is a, a little excessive, and, uh, and I think that twenty percent is very reasonable. So I have really nothing to add and nothing to question. I think the homework was done on this, and, and thank you very much. I, I also, and I know this is slightly off, but I'm allowed to say something um in discussion that I really appreciate the way you brought this forward. By the way, this is the first time we've actually gotten almost all the expenses clear to us at one time. And it's made a big difference in being able to understand the budget and understand that we're getting somewhere. Thank you, that, that nothing's being hidden.
Okay, um, Craig, do you want to go?
Sure. So I've actually, you know, I'm the liaison with the Finance Committee, so I've, I've sat through the extensive discussions around this. And I think I just remind people that the purpose of the surplus is to deal with emergencies, you know, unexpected things. And in addition to the twenty percent we put it, put aside, we also have the ability to potentially get a loan from the county based on our building, and so we, we have access to funds if we had a, you know, to the point of, if the town center burned down and we had to replace it. So I'm comfortable with twenty percent. It seems like the, the right number. It's, you know, mid-range in gets, so, so I, I think this is the, the right approach. And particularly given our finances right now, I mean, Tony's working hard just to get us balanced or close to balance. Uh, and having an excessive surplus, it just doesn't make sense right now. So I'm definitely in favor of it.
Okay, uh, Helen?
You know, uh, I, I I do appreciate that we're at twenty percent. Part of me wants to push it higher. Um, but I will respect um the Finance Committee and Tony's um wi- wisdom, and so I support it. Thank you.
Rebecca?
In general, I support lowering the reserve percentage. Again, I, I have a little concern about considering assigned values as part of that reserve for the general fund. I mean, it's all the same money, but we do owe money for pensions and whatnot. And even though it's not due immediately, it will become due. So it just makes me nervous to, to kind of include that as part of our reserves, so. But, you know, if the Finance and the Finance Department feel comfortable, and I, I feel comfortable that we're now getting monthly reports on this or minimum quarterly, that um the Finance Department will be on top of any kind of major problem coming along, so I think I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. I'm fine with it. Um, I think we can keep our eye on this and see if it makes sense in a few years' time. But the amount of work and effort, effort that's gone in, I really appreciate from the Finance Director and the Finance Committee. And um, it seems like it, you know, it was certainly way too high previously, so I just encourage us all to keep this as part of the analysis periodically, so I'm fine. With that said, uh, do we have a motion, please?
I move that we approve the surplus. What was the title on it? Sorry. The amendment for the uh balance, the minimum balance policy. Second?
Okay, all, uh, we need a roll call vote?
Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hefte?
Yes.
Councilmember Walter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, thank you. Um, next is a, um, the review of the preliminary budget.
Could, could we possibly take a, just a quick five-minute break?
Yeah, absolutely. So it's, uh, let's come back at five two nine. Okay, welcome back, everyone. Uh, we're about to start looking at the preliminary budget, so I'm going to hand it back to Tony.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so yes, this, probably have the first look at the preliminary budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, and also uh look at the fiscal forecast based on where we are. So anticipating the reserve to be at two point one million at the end of uh this fiscal year. You may recall, I use the same reconciliation when we balance the budget. And taking the numbers from fiscal year twenty twenty-one, calculating the estimated deficits, and we're anticipating a surplus for twenty-four, twenty-five of about two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, so subtotal of the reserve is projected to be two point one million uh for the next fiscal year. So this is a look at the budget used with all funds, um, but focusing on the general fund. Again, it's estimated beginning reserve of two point one million. Uh, we're budgeting about seven point nine five million in revenue and seven point nine five million in expenses, uh, with transfers out to the gas tax fund of a hundred and forty thousand, which brings the debt, projected deficit to a little bit under a hundred and thirty-nine thousand. But as we further refine um the budget, uh, before we adopt, um, the number could, well, it's already going down seven eleven thousand with the, uh, what we, the changes we made with the uh uh town committee budgets. Uh, and we're projecting the ending reserve to be one point nine six million, uh, which would still be above the twenty percent minimum fund balance policy. So the general fund, uh, we're looking at about fifteen point five FTE. Uh, we were, we will be using uh additional contractors to augment staff, uh, specifically in building and planning and town engineer. Um, and then also to keep in mind that twenty-five, twenty-six is the last. And then also to keep in mind that 2526 is the last year the credit towards the sheriff's contract from the county expires. So we're gonna categories for 2526, 7.95 million in revenue. And total expenses, including the transfers out, is a little bit under 8.1 million. So the deficit is currently at 139. This budget, there's still constraint on services. The account hours will remain the same. There's still gonna be delays in permanent plan check processing, processing and building inspections, continued delays in website updates, PRA requests and other compliance matters, recruitment, retention and development. Still gonna be challenges, and we're still gonna have a continued reliance on consultants and contractors. Impacts on future budgets, reduced customer service expectations. There still is no staff redundancy. And we're still gonna have ongoing challenges related to reporting complaints. As I stated earlier, continued reliance on consulting contractors based on our limited staffing resources. The sheriff contract, again, no additional credit after fiscal year 202526. So automatically for 2627, there's gonna be a $300,000 increase in sheriff's contract. Limited capital improvement plan investments. We're also gonna have increased maintenance costs for our facilities and our vehicles, in our buildings. We have continued issues with IT. When you see the fiscal forecast, I am projecting limited investments and capital improvements of 300,000 per year. And then looking at our current revenue and expense trends between 2627 and 202930, we'll need to identify an additional 2.1 million in cuts should we not have any new revenue. So looking at the fiscal forecast, some of the assumptions. On the revenue side, property tax grows at 4%. All other taxes grow at 3%, user fees grow at 3%, and has no new revenue measures. And then on the expense side, salaries grow at 3%, benefits grow at 7%, supplies and services grow at 3%, contracts grow at 3%, and capital investment at 300,000 annually. If you recall, during our budget study sessions, we kind of went over what caused the salary increases and the benefit increases. So looking at the fiscal forecast, expenses will exceed revenues by fiscal year 2728. We'll need to find an additional 2.1 million in cuts from 2627 through 2930. And that's just to maintain a balanced budget and to stay above our minimum fund balance policy. But without any new revenue, our reserve will be in deficit by fiscal year 2930. Beginning fiscal year 3031.
Could you explain the graph? What, what is fiscal year yellow?
So, so this is a 10-year graph from 2122 through 203132. The red line are projected expenses. The green line is projected revenue. And as you can see, 2627, the red line exceeds the green line. The blue line is our reserve policy. And then the black line is our projected reserve. So 2728, we're projecting to go under the balance, the fund balance policy. 2829, 2930, and then by 3031, we should be below zero in our general fund. Unless we find 2.1 million in cuts to maintain our reserve at the minimum balance policy. So there has been some conversation and discussion about some revenue enhancement options. The first one that has been discussed is Charter Town. And with the Charter Town, we can set our own real property transfer tax rate. The current rate is 55 cents per $1,000 in sale value. We currently average revenue a little bit over 100,000. Since 2010, the average number of home sales per year is 53. And since 2010, the average sales price has been 3.9 million. So if we adopt the Charter Town and it's set a real property transfer tax rate of $5 per 1,000, which is an increase of $4.45, will generate an estimated 1.04 million in the first full year. And if the measure is approved in November 26, 2026, the rate will be effective January 1st, 2027. So for the first six months, or the second six months of the 2627 year, we will receive a little bit over 500,000 projected. Charter Town, there'll be two ballot questions, and each question will require 50 plus one, 50% plus one majority vote to pass. So if you look at the chart, revenues will exceed expenses. The reserve, the black line, will start exceeding our minimum fund balance policy. And starting from 2728 and onward, we can start making some investments in staffing. We can start making investments in our maintenance, capital projects. We can start implementing some long-term planning and really achieve some long-term financial sustainability with the, setting the real property transfer tax rate at $5 in November 2026. The other option was a parcel tax. It's a flat tax rate assessed on parcels. The town has 1,762 parcels. This would require a two-third majority vote to pass, or 50% plus one if it's a citizen initiative. A parcel tax of $720, which is $60 a month, would generate an estimated 952,000 per year. And this estimate assumes that 25% of the parcels are exempt from the parcel tax. And those numbers we've heard from the school district. But looking at the chart, starting in 2728, revenue does exceed expenses. And then our reserve starts building up above our minimum fund balance policy. And again, this would give us an opportunity to start making some investments in staffing and maintenance, and also some more long, long-term planning with our capital assets. And also just other areas that the town needs to consider. That if the reserve gets up to a certain point, then maybe we can pay down our pension liability. Or we can set some other funding aside for storm drains, or streets, or wildfire protection. The other item that was discussed was a UUT reallocation. This would be reallocation, reallocating a portion of the 2% open space UUT to the general fund. Due to legal challenges, only the telephone and energy UUT will be considered. I'll ask Catherine to expand on that. But it would be a two vote. There would be a vote to repeal and a vote to reallocate, both requiring a 50% plus one. Because to repeal does not require, to repeal a special tax does not require two-thirds vote. But, and to reallocate is to a general tax, going from a specific purpose to a general tax. That requires 50% plus one as well. And this would generate an initial 347K. Would this, I would not recommend this being a standalone revenue option. This could be in conjunction with some other revenue options that the town can consider. But these are just some of the options that have, that have been considered or haven't talked about. I just wanted to present how they would impact our fiscal forecast moving forward after 2627. And that concludes my report, and I turn it back to the council for discussion.
And, right, so to remind folks, I think we're just reviewing, and Catherine, I think we're just providing some direction. Is that the action that we're gonna have to take after we talk?
That's correct.
Okay. So we're gonna start with just questions of Tony. So Rebecca, I'm gonna start with you.
So on the general fund reserve numbers, where you've given estimated deficit for the other, for the past four years, if you will, what, what is the status on updating those numbers?
Those numbers will be finalized when we complete the audit.
But in the absence of the audits, your, your, your team has to do quite a bit of work, correct, in making sure the numbers are as accurate as you can make them before it goes to the auditor?
Under my, under my direction.
So what, what is the status on updating the numbers in the absence of the audit?
So we, I'll be talking to the auditor next week to finalize 2122. But 2223, I mean, we have to do it in a sequential process. Like, we, we can't really, because if there, there could be numbers in 2122 that when they roll, will impact 2324. 2324 rolls, it'll impact 2425. So, but these are our best estimates based on what's been identified, what's been posted.
I mean, I understand that the starting numbers could shift a bit and the ending numbers, but I'm more concerned about what all the numbers in between, you know, are there, has their work already been done on making sure that transactions are in the right departments or all the?
For the most part, the most important part is that it's charged to the right fund.
Yeah.
Departments, you know, we want to get these done. And so if it's within funds, I'm okay with that. If it's a material change, then yeah, we'll make the adjustment. But, you know, we're updating these numbers as we go.
But from the past two years, you're updating the numbers?
Yeah, but we haven't, I haven't touched 22232324 yet because we're finalizing 2126.
Okay.
And then again, the 2425 number is based on our activity, which for 2425, we are current to the date.
Right. Yeah, I have 100% confidence in 2425 numbers. What it makes me a little nervous is whether or not you've kind of put your eyes on all the transactions for 2022 and 2023.
I pretty much look at every fiscal year, every day.
Okay. And then you had said for contractors augmenting staff, what is the town engineer for, since we've now hired?
So the town, town engineer needs to have a support person because there's encroachment permits. It's just one person. We did have an engineering tech at the beginning of last fiscal year, but that person left. And we left that position vacant. And we also had a town engineer position vacant, but now we have a town engineer. Town engineer needs some support.
And the calculation between using a consultant versus using a lower-level staff? It comes out ahead to use the consultant in this case?
Yes, because it's reduced hours, and also we're not paying benefits and.
Okay. And then you said there's 15.5? What is the point 5?
Those are part-time assistants that we have at the front.
Okay.
They're working a total of 1,000 hours combined.
Okay. So when you, when you ran these numbers based on the forecast assumptions you put in here, did you run it for a bunch of other assumptions as well, and?
No, but I can. I mean, I can set it up to run whatever assumption is.
Because I would be curious to know if we were to run it at the current projection for 24, 25, 26, where we show an 8% increase in expenses and a 6% increase in revenues. Where, where were those numbers crossed, especially because of the 8%? The 6% is, I, I don't think it's gonna be an anomaly for the next few years because looking at the, the houses that are selling, I mean, literally, they're going from a house that's valued, assessed at 300,000 to selling for 6 million, you know, so we're benefiting from that. So I think there's gonna be quite a few of those houses coming on the market.
Correct. And that, also, the transfer tax, that's market rate. Whereas the base, it's a 2% assessed and it's capped by Prop 13. So when a house does sale, it's capturing it at market value, the assessed value.
But I'm, you know, I'm kind of concerned when you look at these percentage increases, that 8%. So, yes, can the numbers be run at 8%? And where would the, where would the, the, where would that black line? What, how sooner, how much sooner would the black line cross the, the blue line or the yellow?
Referring to?
And when I look at your page, general fund page, where the 15.5 FTE, just the summary of 2425 and 2526, you show an increase of revenues of 6%, 6.2%. Right? And then an increase in expenses of 8.15 compared to last year.
Okay, so remember, 2425 number is our, was our reset balance budget. 2526, we've added additional staff. Or we're, we have filled additional staff. So yeah, that kind of skews the numbers a little bit because we didn't have those positions filled. We used those vacancies to balance the budget. So now we're not. So it's gonna skew the numbers a little bit for this one year.
Okay. But the question about the graphs, then, as you see the expenses, that red line that you have projected going up with the salaries growing at 3%, you know, the numbers you give here, do you have the staff growing as well?
I have salary costs increasing 3%.
And that means?
That's to be competitive with our salaries.
So that's not new staff, right?
No, that's, well, we can add staff with the way the forecast is.
Okay, so that's an important thing to understand, right? And then for the UUT, if you could clarify, when you say reallocate a portion of the 2% open space, I wasn't clear if you're just doing part of that 2% or you're, the numbers here are run with an entire 2%.
So we assess UUT on three categories. There's telephone, energy, which is consists of gas and electric and water. So when I say a portion, we're only doing two of the three because we can't touch water.
And do you think there's an impact from people going more solar? Won't we lose more of the energy?
That is, that is a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Mary, what kind of questions do you have?
None.
Okay, Craig?
So I guess I wanted to follow up a little bit on some of Rebecca's questions and then talk about a couple other things. So when we went back to the, let's see, go back a couple of slides. One that showed the deficits, so it was, I don't know, maybe three slides back. I think the backward, I'm not sure.
This is, this is the fiscal forecast with no revenue.
Right, you, you had the one that had like fiscal 2425 at like 200K. It was just a table.
The second slide, maybe?
There you go. So how accurate, I mean, I, I understand that it rolls through and you're working it, but you've been looking at all these numbers, like there's, there's not like huge things missing. I mean, do you think these are plus or minus 10%, 10%, plus or minus 2%? Like, what's your sense for this sort of estimated deficit?
About 90%.
Okay, so roughly within 10%? Are you, are you comfortable with that? Okay.
I'm a little bit, about 98% on the 200K.
Okay.
Because we have current, we're current with our posting.
Right, exactly. And so, yeah, I know you've been working through this stuff, and just because we don't have the audits done yet, doesn't mean you have a pretty good handle on what's here, so.
Right.
Okay. And for the real estate transfer tax, what are typical ranges? Like for charter cities? I mean, because they can be quite high, can't they, like?
Yeah, there's some cities, they've tiered it, but it's like it triggers a certain value. It's a higher, I think Oakland had like five or six different tiers.
So a progressive?
San Mateo, city San Mateo is 5%.
Okay.
But yeah, there, there, some cities have tiered it.
But, but 5% is a reasonably typical number?
Oh, I'm sorry, $5 is.
What, $5 per thousand? Yeah, sorry. Yes, sorry, yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah.
But yeah, no, some have $8.
5% that would be pretty great, yeah.
But yeah, no, the, um, some have eight, 20, 30, I mean, it, it does fluctuate, but not a lot. There's not a lot of towns up and down the coast that have, like not every city in San Mateo County is chartered.
Right, but like LA would be an example, I think they're a charter city.
Yeah, yeah, there's some south, so, southern California cities that do have different grades as well.
Yeah, right, and I thought they were considering.
I haven't looked at the chart in a while, but there are, there are, there's a few cities that do have tiered based on whatever the dollar value is, it triggers a higher transfer rate.
Right, got it, okay. And then on the parcels, you had 1762 parcels. Did you account for exempt? People can ask for an exemption on this.
That's, I, I discounted it to 75%.
Okay, so that, that's with a discount, okay.
Could I quickly real clarify on Oakland? I just look it up here, $10 per thousand for 300,000 and goes up there from there. $15 up to 2 million, 1750 up to five and 25 up above five, five.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a progressive, in their case, it's a progressive tax. And that's something we can consider as well.
Something we can consider.
Yep, so, and then now going to the graphs, which are now like five slides down. So I, so I think the important thing is, um, so that, that graph's fine, but if you go to your sort of future, go down one more. So here, you're basically, all the expenses here are basically assuming no growth. No, the hours at the, um, counters stay the same. Like it's no additional services from what we're doing now, it's just paying the inflationary cost. Is that the right way to think about it?
Right, but given that the revenue increases and the reserve increases will allow us to make the investment on the expense side.
Right.
To right-size the organization.
Right, yeah, and I, I understand as, as the gap between the blue and the black gets larger, that gives us money that we can move up to the red line, yeah, to the red line, right. But when we go to look at this stuff, and obviously this isn't, we're trying to talk about next year's budget, but as we start to think about this, we're really going to need to think about where do we want the town to be? Not how do we just maintain the status quo? Because it seems pretty clear to me, when I listen to residents, having limited, um, window hours and all this stuff is not where the town wants to be. So I think we do need to be careful with these graphs, that they, they look great, but if we were to project out, if we were to be open, if the windows were open full time, that kind of thing, we'd end up with a different looking graph. So at some point, that might be worth considering.
Correct, right, and that, yes, that's the next step with just looking at this. But then, yeah, but it's not just the counter hours. It's also, hey, do we want to pay down the pension liability? Do we want to fund, um, capital improvements? Do we want to have storm drains? Do we want any other long-term master plan that the, the town has not done?
Right.
That, you know, because I mean, it, it just, how we're operating and how we're balancing the budget, it's masking the true cost of the services that the town provides and what the town needs to provide and what that cost is.
So then to try to bring this around to a question, so, um, so obviously we're looking at next year's budget and that's what we're being asked to, you know, look at for the preliminary. But your, the idea here is you're expecting that we're going to have a larger discussion about what the town expenses should be in the future?
I would hope so.
Yeah, and you're imagining that's within the next few months presumably?
I, I think it would be an ongoing conversation throughout the next fiscal year.
Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
I think I'm up, right, Mayor?
Yep.
Thanks, thank you. It's, you said on the charter town, uh, the bottom of the slide that we're on right now, you have, you said two ballot questions. So is it one to become a charter light town, right? And then the second would be, do you want this taxation situation? Okay. So, okay, going to the parcel tax, um, of the 1762 parcels, how many are commercial?
Get back to you on that one, but not a lot.
Yeah, I know, we don't have many, okay.
The, our, our, our property tax consultant has a breakdown.
Yeah, but I know it's small. And the 25% exempted, it's generally based on age, as I recall, usually for parcel taxes, right? People over a certain age are welcome to exempt in.
Yeah, I think some parcel tax measures that the, the school district has that option. But there's also parcels that are exempt because it's either owned by the town or it's owned by utilities. So they're, they also factor in.
Right, okay, right, I've heard that Boston is like 50% exempt. Yeah. UUT allocation, um, could you clarify again? Could we go to, oh, you've got that slide up, great. Um, I'm a little bit unclear, due to legal challenges, only telephone and energy? Thanks, thank you. Is that Prop 218?
That's correct, this is Prop 218 and there has been a lot of litigation that unfortunately has clarified that, um, for water and sewer UUT, you need to, um, you need to comply with Prop 218. Or, uh, get a two-thirds majority. So, um, the proposal is not to touch the water UUT, rather, um, just to focus on the telephone and energy.
And, and when you say energy because of Councilmember Flynn, energy being gas, not being solar?
No, it's gas and electric.
Gas and electric, okay. Okay, um, and then, um, and are we able, you, uh, you could reallocate a portion of the two percent open space to, I mean, to do something like a fire safety and something? Can you change it that way potentially?
Then you're, you're making it special, so that will require two thirds.
Yeah, I got it, okay.
You could have an advisory measure that's non-binding.
I'm sorry, so.
You can have a, you can have an advisory measure along with this that says, we recommend it, blah, blah, blah. It's non-binding, um, but, you know, it's just another question on the ballot.
Got it, okay, and then so if, could you, but you would have to have two different ballot questions, like?
Yes, there will be two questions. One is to repeal.
The old one?
The old one, and then to reallocate it to, which makes it a general tax.
Got it.
Which is why it's 50% as well.
And when you have multiple things on the ballot, do you pay extra for each ballot question?
No, the ballot, my understanding, it's based on how many.
Words?
Entities are included in the ballot. So like if we're the only ones, then yes, we're, we're paying, we're paying the cost. But if it's the November 26, or sorry, November 28 ballot, there's going to be multiple cities with ballot measures, so those costs will be split.
Got it, okay. Let me just make sure that I got all my questions. Um, in terms of the 1 million, in your staff report, you say we'll need an infusion of new revenue of approximately 1 million per year. And going, I think this is somewhat my similar question to Councilmember, sorry, Taylor, Vice Mayor Taylor. One of these days I'll get it. So, and that's for current service levels, right? Or is the 1 million predicted with like, with like, um, town center being open at least four days a week, you know, nine to five kind of situation?
No, this, this would be to expand services.
To expand services is at least a million is what we're, you predict that we need. To ex, to expand, to meet services that we see.
So that the town can make some significant investments in increasing services and also achieving long-term financial sustainability and be able to address long-term needs as well. Long-term needs.
Okay. Reese, I think two weeks ago, maybe four week, four weeks ago, you predicted that our sewer infrastructure would potentially be 3 million, as I recall?
Yes.
So that would not meet that need though, for instance?
Well, we could, well, it depends on what the assessment comes out. And they will have a, they will have a maintenance plan in, and it will say you need to invest X amount of dollars a year.
Got it, okay. So what do, I mean, um, do you feel like a million? Because you're phrasing as an infusion of approximately 1 million. If we were to have 1.1 million tax revenue, for instance? And that would, because then it would be able, we would be able to?
I mean, the million is just starting point. If we get more than that, great, but we need at least a million.
Okay.
I've been pretty consistent with that.
Right, and I mean, right now, for instance, like our town manager salary per, you know, that range is some of the lowest salaries, for instance. I haven't looked at our salary schedule for the other, um, positions, um, but it's some of the lowest paid salaries in the county.
Right.
Right.
Yes, this could help with recruitment and retention.
Right, right, okay, okay, those are my questions, thank you.
Okay, I only have a couple and they're following up on Helen's initial set of questions around the ballot cost. So when you say it depends on how many jurisdictions are participating or entities, if there's five entities, but we have three different questions for the voters and somebody else has one, is that still, uh, equally split between the entities? How does that work?
Christine, can you elaborate on that?
The, the question was about, um, the ballot cost, the cost that the county charges us for ballot measures. Uh, like assuming we're going to be on a, um, November 2026 ballot, if we have two ballot measures versus one ballot measure, would we get charged twice as much, for example, or the, you know, more for the additional ballot measures versus just one?
Uh, no, actually, um, Mayor members of the council. In my experience, um, you'll pay for your portion of the, um, election, you know, small election. So you could have five ballot measures. You can have 12 people running for office, it'll be, um, roughly the same cost. It doesn't cost incrementally much more than your base election cost.
So for example, if there is two jurisdictions, we have two questions, the other one has one. Are you saying we, we split equally? Roughly speaking, I'm not going to hold you to exact figures, the cost of that ballot?
If you have a special election, you'll definitely pay for the whole thing or split it up to another entity. If it's a general municipal election, you will just pay your incremental share. So for example, this past November, the election costs were, I thought reasonable, 13,000 or 13,000. You know, I've seen 50,000, 75,000, but, so I think it's allocated by public population and printing costs and.
I, well, I, maybe we can drop the question now and, and maybe do a little follow-up on that because I'm still not clear if, I mean, maybe the printing costs are the things at scale and maybe that's trivial, uh, trivial amount. But I, I do want to understand what, what the charges will be, and it doesn't have to be tonight.
I do have one question.
Okay, go ahead, Mary.
Are you done?
No, I'm not done.
Please go.
Okay, so in terms of what Tony said about the, uh, UUT and the advisory, uh, like you could vote to repeal it and have a general fund, but have an advisory, uh, type of mandate? I didn't quite understand what that meant, if you could explain it?
Well, in my previous experience, um, Sippy Grove, we had sales tax measure. But there was also a, an advisory measure that said the town recommends that the funds be used for this purpose, but it was still a general tax. So that they, they got around the two-thirds, um, requirement by having the general tax, but then having an advisory measure, which is non-binding. I mean, it was still, council still had discretion on how the funds could be used, but it was the residents wanted to voice that we wanted the funds to be used for this purpose.
In case, it sounds like it was an optical measure to make people feel like there, the funds would shift toward what the public wanted, but essentially it's still a general fund.
Still a general tax.
Yeah, okay, thank you, those are my questions. And Mary, go ahead.
I just, I wanted to make sure that, uh, when, when we brought up charter city for the last three years or so, people always said it was too expensive, that we wouldn't, um, be able to afford the cost. So the costs included not just the election cost, but the costs of setting up a charter city afterwards. Are you concluding those in your, in your graphs?
I, I firmly believe that we can find the right amount of volunteers in this town to draft a charter.
Good.
I have a question, a couple more questions actually.
Okay, go ahead, Mary, you're done, thank you.
Yeah, all done.
On a charter ballot issue, is it, uh, the seller of the sale who the fee comes out of? Or does it, is it the buyer, like?
Well, it, it depends on the negotiations. The, the seller could pay it, the buyer could pay it, they could split it. But yeah, it's all part of the negotiation.
Okay, so that's, it doesn't have to be part of the actual.
Nope. That's a, that's a real estate transaction and it's, it's handled through that process.
And we could potentially tier it even at like a higher, like, I know, you know, uh, Mountain View did commercial for 8 million and up or something, right? Okay, um, my other question is, um, under the UUT, under the open space 2%, is there, I'm sorry, and I, I don't mean to beat a dead horse, but I'm still a little confused. On the, could, for instance, could we reallocate the 2% to elsewhere? Or could we take 1% for open space and reallocate another 1% elsewhere, like? And, but does that trigger a?
You're triggering special tax.
Got it, okay.
It has to go from open space to general fund for it to be a general tax.
Okay, got it. Okay, thank you, thanks for clarifying.
Okay. Are there any other council questions?
I have one, uh, that is may or may not be relevant to this. I somehow, the San Mateo County Animal Control snuck by me and I had a question about that. Can't we just get rid of the San Mateo Animal Control contract?
No.
Why? From the presentation we had last year, it seemed it was a deficit. It was a, it was, it was a decrease in the quality of life in our town rather than an increase to be have a San Mateo Animal Control contract.
Understood, it's a requirement through San Mateo County. Since we're in the county line, we do have to pay them for animal control services if we don't ourselves provide animal control services as a municipality. So as a city, if we're not providing animal control services, like we don't have an individual on staff, San Mateo County requires that we utilize their services.
It has to be a staff person.
And it has to be as robust as their program.
I, I had some other questions, I'm sorry, I'm sorry Judith, I know it's late. But in the packet.
But in the packet.
Go ahead.
Um, in the packet, could you just clarify what the cafeteria plan management is? Because those numbers are enormous. And when I added them all up across all the different funds and departments and whatever, it's 213,000. So what, and, and you have a, you have a different number for medical insurance and dental and vision? So I didn't quite, wasn't quite sure what cap, what the.
Cafeteria plan is, the town contributes a portion towards medical.
Oh, oh.
And then the health insurance is net of employee deduction. So the diff, it's the difference between the premium and the employee deduction. Cause the employee pays a portion towards medical as well.
But I guess I'm not following that. So the town is paying towards all of the, this is just medical?
Yeah.
But then what is the health insurance, the medical insurance line item?
Yeah, the health insurance, that's our CalPERS health premiums, dental premiums, vision premiums. So part of the benefit package is employees receive a cafeteria plan payments towards the cost of these, um, premiums. But then the employees also have a deduction out of their paychecks to help cover the costs as well.
Okay.
So, yeah, we gotta balance, we gotta budget those, those line items.
And are those numbers in line with other municipalities in terms of per person?
Yeah, cafeteria plans are, are kind of dictated by the Affordable Care Act.
Oh, so it's, there's no advantage for trying to work with Redwood City and use, you know, contract out of their plan or some?
We're, we are contracted with PERS, so we have to use PERS.
Okay. And, um, the other?
We have some flexibility with our dental and vision, but those costs are minimal.
And somewhere I saw something called leap reimbursement.
Leap?
Leap, yeah, I can't remember where I saw it, but it was, um, it said the town has not applied for leap reimbursement. This was from the past.
I'm gonna have to get back in.
Okay.
What was the dollar?
I don't remember. I didn't write it down, but.
I don't, I, I don't think it's significant.
Hmm?
I don't think it was significant.
Probably not, yeah. Okay.
Okay, is that it? Right, and I, I cannot see anyone in the schoolhouse, but is there anyone there and are their hands up?
There is one reporter from the Wall Street Journal joining us, um, but he does not have his hand up.
Excellent, all right. Um, all right, then we'll go online. I have Rita Comas with her hand up.
Hi, uh, thank you for taking my comment. Uh, people are, are talking about it, but how much will it actually cost us to bring the charter or parcel tax to the ballot? Or implement the UUIT reallocation? And, uh, some of the people on the dais have also, um, mentioned about our year-end financials from, back from 2021 to 2022 and forward, you know, 2023, 2024. And I guess we're gonna be doing 2025 at some point. But, you know, it makes me a little uncomfortable that here we are trying to figure out how we can increase the amount that the residents are paying when we haven't done the backend of the, all of these financials and audits. I know people are working on it, and we've been hearing for years that they've been working on and why they've been delayed, but they're still being delayed. You know, I'm, I'm not just speaking for myself, but many people are talking about it. Let's see if we can get this done, then ask me for more money, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. I am not seeing any other hands raised, so I'm gonna bring it back to council for discussion. And again, we're, we're trying to provide direction to Tony, uh, for when he brings the, the full budget back. Um, I will, I will ask that when the full budget comes back, I, I wanna remind people, we're also gonna get a report from the Finance Committee on its pros and cons list for revenue enhancement. So we'll, maybe we could have us, uh, in, in that future meeting, um, discussion of the cost, um, cause that, that's the point that for more fulsome discussion. And, um, Craig, would you mind starting?
I don't mind. I, I think we're trying to give Tony guidance on this coming fiscal year's budget. So all these other things we're talking about, revenue enhancement, is a completely different conversation, which is certainly very interesting, and I absolutely believe that in the next two or three months, we need to have more of it. But giving Tony direction on what he's proposing for the, um, next year's fiscal budget, I am perfectly happy with what he has there. And I appreciate the work that's gone into it.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna go to Mary next.
I also appreciate it very much, and I think we're, we're getting there, and you've done a good job in presenting it. Thank you. I, I, I would like to reiterate that I, I too believe that we need to continue to tighten our belts in many different ways. And, um, just like the council, to remember that, too. Thank you.
Okay, um, can you still hear me? The, the, uh, video froze.
Yes.
Okay, good. All right.
And your video looks good as well. We can see your head moving.
Okay, uh, Rebecca.
Um, I, I wanna just thank, thank Tony for the really excellent information that you're providing us and all the diligence and dedication to making sure our numbers are accurate. Um, I appreciate that you've given us a 90% confidence about the old numbers, uh, so that we really feel like we're pretty close, pretty close to what the numbers eventually will be when the, when we've gotten through all the audits. Um, I did wanna bring up something that was out of the packet. Um, this is, we've talked about the fact that this ba, this budget doesn't allow us to in, increase our service levels. Um, but part of the cuts you've, you put in the packet was to delay the hiring of the, the Director of Planning and Building, and I'm not in favor of that. I, so I, I guess based on the numbers, we save 100,000, but we st, we would still have the backup of the annuitant working for us for that period? Or would we not have that person working 40 hours a week? Um, I'm a little unclear on that, but, um, I.
Yeah, the, the hours that Terrence will be putting in will not be full-time, but he's also an annuitant, so he's not benef, doesn't receive benefits.
So what have you?
The number in the packet was what's budgeted minus his projected hours. But, you know, we, depending on when that, that position is filled. Um, I mean, there could, I could have to come back in the mid-year and say, it wasn't a six-month deferral, it was actually a three-month deferral, so I'm gonna have to adjust the budget.
So how many hours did you calculate for, um, Terrence to work for us?
About 500 hours.
Over the next?
Half is, half of his 900 and 960.
So that's about 20 hour, no, for six months, is that what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so it's about 20 hours a week or so? Um, so, is there funding in there for consultants to, to back, to, you know, to back up what needs to happen?
There is funding for consultants already. But for as far as, I mean, Terrence is technically our consultant, but he's, he's, he's a retired annuitant, which means he's on payroll.
Okay, but he's got a separate line item, correct, or not?
No, he's included in the salary.
Oh, in salaries, oh, okay, so, um.
Yeah, salaries and taxes, salaries and some benefits, but he doesn't, he's not receiving medicals, anything dental, vision, or pension.
Right, so I, I think as you move forward to next, the next meeting, we really need to think about whether or not our, our, uh, planning and building function, um, can make the changes necessary to improve service levels, because it's causing a lot of grief and distress and lost money for our residents and our, um, the contractors, you know? So I thi, I think that's a little bit of a discussion, if it's gonna add 100,000, you know, it's maybe necessary to do that, and we hit our reserve a little bit harder.
I am, I am considerate of that. But I'm also recognizing that there's gonna be some time before the position's filled.
Okay. Otherwise, um, and I'm, I think you're, we're kind of on the right track, we're really close to a balanced budget. Um, I appreciate all the effort that's gone into putting this together. Okay, um, Helen?
Thank you. Um, so I had, I'm just gonna echo, I don't mean to be redundant, but echo Rebecca about the Building and Planning Director. Um, uh, you know, obviously, I don't wanna send us further into deficit, but it does concern me that we would, um, continue down the path that we're currently in for building and planning. So it might, you know, depending on hiring of this, um, of the town manager and their experience with, with planning. Um, but it does concern me, so, um. And does, I mean, you know, we contract with Good City to permit, do the permitting. Um, would it be more cost-effective to contract with Good City instead of an annuitant? For that position, I'm just curious.
You, you still need somebody on staff.
Okay.
And a managed process.
Right, that's fair. Okay, um, but otherwise echoing what everyone has said, thank you, you know, that they're on us. Um, you've made this accessible and your patience with questions is appreciated, so thank you. Thank you.
Okay, um, thank you, Tony. I'm very comfortable with with the information you've provided.
Hey, Judith, you, you did just freeze.
Oh.
You said you were very comfortable, and then we lost you.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm comfortable with what you've presented. I, I do not have, uh, particular direction. Um, it is very hard for us not to conflate the budget, as Craig observed, with, uh, other issues on revenue enhancements, which we are going to be addressing at a future meeting. But as far as this budget goes, um, you've done a huge amount of work, it shows, and the level of detail is greatly appreciated, so I have no further direction. Um, Tony, uh, I wanna make sure you're getting from us what you need, uh, so feel free to ask us if you have any, anything else you need us to comment on, otherwise I think that does it.
Uh, no, I've, I've, I've received what I need, and I, I will take into account the, uh, Building and Planning Director.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, all right, we can move on to, um, the next item, which is actually not relevant to, um, the budget, uh, that's going to be presented. It's a report from the ad hoc, um, uh, Post Adoption Plan Subcommittee, and that subcommittee is Craig and myself. Um, I did wanna explain what the document in the packet is, cause it could be confusing. Um, what we did, we did, we did not wanna confuse people by making you dig and look for what's different in the details of the Post Adoption Plan, um, that was reviewed, um, last year. And so the, the only thing that's new here is, um, there's some annotation underneath the, uh, the chart, the, the draft post, a housing element timeline. Those, um, updates to the timeline that, um, are on page 92 and, and 93 are the only things that we've added to explain where we are relative to the timeline above in that chart, which we did not change. So, um, we had, um, different topics when we first adopted the housing element that were attached as, um, follow-on activities that we wanted to see conducted. And I think if you look at the 2025 updates, you'll see that the, um, the housing site inventory, uh, follow-up, the sunrise opportunity, um, that activities, those activities have been completed. Um, I did not, uh, comment on T2, which is the zoning update, cause that had been done. Now, we're not talking about zoning everything for the whole current housing element. This was the piece that still needed to get done when we brought the housing element, um, forward and the Post Adoption Plan was adopted with it. So that piece of the zoning was completed. Um, we're still looking at the CEQA guidelines and thresholds. Um, it's been a lot for the town to process everything that it's going through. And, uh, until we have a, a permanent planner and a, a new town manager, it didn't feel like the right time to be, uh, taking this on. Um, T4 is supplemental safety measures, and I think this is going to end up overlapping with a lot of the next couple of topics we're talking about tonight and, uh, work on safety element in general. Uh, so I think there's going to be synergies there, but the comment there.
You just hung up, I guess, Judith. We'll wait for you to come back. You're still, um. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so you froze our way through. You were sort of going through, you were just finishing up T4 when you froze.
Okay, I didn't get beyond that, actually. Um, it was just saying that, uh, the second half of 2025, we're planning to make progress on, on those. And we could decide if what is going to happen under the next couple of memos and other work should be supplemented or not. But right now, we, we are not currently pursuing them. Uh, and then looking at services and infrastructure, uh, was delayed, and we think that merit's looking at, once we have a new town manager and the planning director. Um, and T5.2, insurance, this has been, it's developed a lot since we discussed the Post Adoption Plan. Uh, we had a presentation by Ray Mueller, uh, late last year, and, um, we wanted to, um, just say we should all be watching this, but it sounds like, um, the WPC is also monitoring that, so it's in process. Um, T7 is civic engagement. We have not made progress on that, because we've been doing so much else. Uh, but we think we should consider, or we can consider, forming a working group for outreach, um, in the fall of 2025 or onward. And the information repository work was not developed in the originally, um, envisioned way, but there is a lot of the information available on the website. Last, the items designated as milestones were really focused on achieving the timelines for, uh, Dorothy Ford Field. Given our work on the, um, alternate sites, uh, we focused on those as a town and, and, um, we'll see where those, uh, end up, uh, if, if it looks fruitful, and we are hopeful it will. Uh, at least two of those sites, uh, will look at an update on progress later in the year. So.
You hung up again.
A cracker would.
You're, you're still, so you got to sew in your final concluding statement. Oh.
You might wanna turn off your video.
Yeah, I'll probably do that, but, um, did, did I cover the milestones?
Yeah, I think you got most of it in.
Yeah.
You started to break up at the end, but I, I, I think you, I think you got most.
Yeah, the milestones are not being pursued right now while we figure out the alternate sites, and we can do a report later in the year. Um, and then figure out, you know, a more specific timeline then and, and update. So that's it. I'll, um, turn it over to you, Craig, if I missed anything.
No, I think you, I think you captured most of it, um. It just remind everybody that we do have an approved housing element now, um. And although this isn't going as quickly as I think we hoped when we originally put this together. Um, I'm pleased that we're continuing to chip away at it, and that was really my goal at the beginning, is not to let these things just. Slip away, um, and, and disappear, so. Um, although it's taken us longer than we'd hoped, um, we are continuing to make sure that these things get finished because. It was sort of the, if you will, and I put this in air quotes, but sort of the contract with the community. That when we passed the original housing element that we were going to follow up on these issues, and I feel like we're continuing to do that.
Yeah, I, I'll just caveat that a couple of those items were done in advance of the timeline, so it's a mix of progresses. One would. Sure, given everything that's the town's been dealing with.
Yeah, fair, fair enough.
Okay. Okay. So we can open it up for questions if, if, um. Helen wants to get started, are there any questions that you have?
Um, always, um, respectfully, because obviously, uh, the situation with Dorothy Ford Field is. You know. Uh, the status, um. So in terms of the RFP. Um, even though it's not Dorothy Ford Field, there is still the requirement to do a, um, RFP is. If, uh. If I remember correctly.
The, the housing element does require us to do an RFP, uh, starting at the beginning of twenty twenty-six, so. It's going to be important that over the next few months, we get our bearings on the alternate sites. And gear up for that if we, if we need to, but right today, I don't know that we are there yet.
The, the other thing I would add is this, what we're talking about tonight is just the post-housing element, so. The, um, RFP is actually part of the housing, so they're, they're, they are slightly different things. That, that, this was meant to be just what we were doing in addition to what we had proposed. This was, you know, over and above.
Okay, because, um, I would also note that. Um, it doesn't include some of the program. Okay, I can't even pronounce that word, program.
Programmatic?
Thank you, um, tired. Um, that, uh. You know, the ADU support for folks, um, opt-in, da-da-da-da-da, so that's.
But again, this isn't the housing element programs, this was just some additional things. Some of them came from the planning commission, these are things. In addition to the housing element itself, so you're absolutely right, these are not about housing.
Okay. Great. Okay.
Yeah, it's. Yeah, just to put a fine point on it, the post-adoption plan was a document. And it's attached here and it's labeled as prior material. And that document is the only thing we're updating, we, we're not. Uh, pretending that this is a full force, uh, compliance with the housing element, that's a different discussion from at least my point of view.
Actually, I do have one more question.
I, well, sure.
Thank you, um. Did, did you two work in conjunction with the planning department? On this?
I mean, initially, yes. Yeah, in terms of the estimates and stuff that we got, absolutely, yeah. And, and legal counsel as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, Mary, Mary, do you have questions?
Uh, I think, I, I don't have any questions, hopefully for.
I was skipping over you, Craig.
Yeah, no, no, no worries, so I think Rebecca's ready to say something and then Mary.
Um, I guess my only question is, um, for the items.
I was asking Mary to go next, but.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, I was, yeah. Yeah, no problem, that's fine, thank you.
Um, I guess. My, my only question is for the items where there hasn't been any progress, uh, do you, do the two of you have a sense of. How you might achieve some of these because quite a few do require significant, um. Planning and staff time, and it sounds like based on what we just heard that we're not going to be, uh, boosting. Any, we're not going to have any extra staff time over and above kind of what's critical for just holding the, the ship afloat, so, um. And then there's a bunch of, there's, there's several subcommittees that you're proposing, um. So I'm just wondering what, what the plans are to actually make progress on some of these.
Well, this is just. A status update, um, because we, we recognize that we have to, we might as a council decide. To re-prioritize, reallocate, but right now, um, no, I don't, um, I, I was. I think the constructive thing to do is to wait and see. Who our new town manager is and what, where we are on the planning director and consultant, whatever that mechanism we end up with is. And we need feedback on the, um, new sites that were in, um, identified, so I would say toward the.
So Judith, we lost you again. Yeah, you're still breaking up.
End of summer, we should have a clearer discussion on. Okay. Um.
Okay, so we, we lost most of that last comment, but.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, my, my apologies, I think we are going to look at the end of the summer to bring this back once we know more about our staff.
Yeah, yeah, fall, fall is probably more realistic, yeah, but, but fall is end of summer, I mean, you know, what comes after summer, fall, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Um. I assume no one in the schoolhouse has their hand raised, Craig, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay. I am not seeing anyone with their hand raised online, so I'll bring it back for any. Any discussion that there might be, this was more of a report, so there's no action to be taken. But if there is any further comment, feel free, uh, Rebecca, do you have anything?
Uh, well, I look, I look forward to hearing an update in the fall.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mary?
No, no, thank you very much for putting it together.
Okay, uh, Craig, nothing else?
Not for me.
Okay, and Helen?
Uh, no, I appreciate what you guys have done, thank you.
Okay, okay. I think we can then, uh, move on and. I don't know who's going to make a presentation with their staff.
I'm going to open it up.
As an overview. Yeah, go ahead, thank you.
So, um. This kind of began when the, we updated our priorities. For the year, looking at what we want to achieve by June thirtieth and what we want to achieve by, uh, the end of December. One of those priorities was put some kind of framework together to use. The safety issues in the community, both the safety element and general safety issues as a way to. Bring people together as more unified, but also how do we make sure that. Community is engaged in the safety element as it comes up. So, back in April, the issue was raised from a, a council. Colleagues, that started with council member Flynn. And kind of get the ball rolling and what happened there was decided, well, we ought to look at it in two ways. A memo around the safety element, but a memo around, they call it resilience, but it's really. Looking at a collaborative model where all the various committees that work on safety, which are quite a few. In, in the town, look at ways that they could work together. So at that session, Vice Mayor Taylor said, I would like to work on that. And that's what they've done, they've gone off and worked and, and put together. Two memos around it that are more of a, how do we get started, not a. End result. They're more of a. A framework for things. We will be doing the safety element coming up, that is part of the planning commission's work, but it's also part of the staff's work. And. I think the memorandum on the safety element. Ties in where the community gets engaged and where the council gets engaged as we work our way through it. And the other was the original idea of, um. More collaboration, more working together of all the safety committees, but I will let, um. Councilmember Flynn and Vice Mayor Taylor take it from here. That's how it got started. And, um. That's why it's here. So it, it had a colleagues memo kickoff in April and comes to you today. And I'll be happy to answer any questions on that before they. I need to before the vice mayor and the council member take it away. All right.
So Judith, do you want us to start?
Yeah, please, um, would love to hear, and just be clear if you're taking them both together. Or which one you're talking about, if you want to take them sequentially.
Sure, um, do you mind if I start, Rebecca? Yeah. Gi- given they're in the packet as two separate items, I think we should just address them as separate items, I, I mean. Originally it was one, we sort of split it into two, but they're, they're intertwined, um, in the sense that. They're, they're both trying to serve in, in many ways the same purpose. Which is basically just to help work with staff to move some of this stuff forward because we both saw these as a critical need for the town. The goal isn't to, you know, make decisions of either these subcommittees that are being proposed, it's really to get some stuff. Move forward and get it in front of the council, so with, you know, working with staff. So if we just start with the resilience, since that one got put first, even so it says the second of two. We'll, we'll treat it as the first of two, um, it's really two pieces, I mean, one is to draft a list of safe, safety initiatives. And come up with some rough priorities around those. And the idea would be to, you know, reach out to the community and particularly reach out to the various committees that we have, um, in town. And get those and try to get them all in one place so that the council has a way of thinking about this. And then the second piece was. There was discussion of whether we should have a safety task force and, you know, some people think having a single task force would be a good thing. Other people are like, no, we should just assign different pieces to the various committees that we have. And so the second proposal here is for the subcommittee to go look into that and then come back with a proposal to the council. So those are kind of the two deliverables on this, one is just a list of safety initiatives. It won't be complete, but it will be, you know, a draft and it would give us, we, the council, something to work with. And then the second would be a recommendation on whether we have a safety task force or delegate to individual committees. Did I capture most of that?
You did, and the only thing I would add was that, um. In creating the list, the subcommittee would also make some, uh, recommendations for how we might prioritize the various.
Yes.
Um, initiatives, and then we'd bring it back to the town council to kind of discuss those.
Right, and again, it would be, you know, a draft set of priorities, it's not, it's not the town's priorities, but it would just be, you know. For the subcommittee's point of view, here's how, you know, we think that these are critical, that we do something maybe sooner. And here are other ones that we should deal with eventually, you know, and just so we have this stuff in one place for the, the council to consider.
Okay, thank you, um, Mary, do you have any questions?
Well, the ongoing question is how it's going to interact with the planning. Commission.
Um, so I think the second one, which is the safety element. Uh, we can get to, I'm happy to answer that, which is, it's not going to change any of that, like, there's nothing here where the subcommittee is going to. All we would do is eventually work with, like, on safety element, it'd be working with staff, the staff's still going to eventually propose a safety element. It will go to the planning commission, the planning commission will do all their work on it and it will come to the council for approval, so. I mean, the subcommittee was just, and again, we're jumping a little ahead, that's why they were in a different order originally. But the work on the safety element was mainly to help staff, just to say, you know, let's get a couple of council members in there to help move stuff forward.
And I would clarify also, since we're kind of jumping onto that issue, um, in rereading the document about the safety element, it's really about. Us, working on a safety element document. That then would go to the planning council, the planning commission, so just kind of, we left out that word document, probably would have made it clearer.
And, and I think the thing that we can help with is like gathering public input, following up on like where's the current status, because we've done a bunch of this before. Right, we took, we, we, we basically got a bunch, so I just want to make sure we go back and get all this stuff back together in one place. So that if we hire a consultant to work on the safety element, we say, here's the package of stuff. And we don't just spin our wheels and spend, you know, another twenty or thirty thousand dollars on the consultant to go do all this over again, so that. That was really kind of the goal, is to basically make sure we don't lose track. Lose track maybe is the wrong word, but, you know, we've got a lot of stuff here already, so let's pull it together so that we use. Our planning and our consultant resources effectively. But again, let's, let's kind of table this a little bit until we get to the second one, just because the way they're agendized, but.
Any other questions, Mary?
No.
Okay, uh, Helen, do you have any?
I mean, like, I, I would jump to comments, so I'll wait to.
Okay. My questions are diving into a little bit of the. The detail around it, um. Because there is a list of initial pri, you know, preliminary list, and I, I know I heard that you want to work on that. But what I'm a little unclear on. I heard a couple of things, I just want to confirm. Not a decision-making body, more of a doing some hard work to put together a draft. On point number one, list of initiatives with weightings. But how are you going to develop those priorities, um, just help me understand a little bit more in terms of the committees. And possibly a commission, because some of these. These items, you know, um, might require some commission. Input or, or discussion, so how are you thinking of getting that input?
Sure, so, so the first part, a- absolutely not a decision-making body, like that, that would, it's a subcommittee, right, the council is the decision-making body, so.
Okay.
Um, absolutely that, um, and I think the idea of. The, you know, generally prioritizing is to say, you know, underneath each of these, sort of detail out what they are and sort of talk about why they're important. And then use that, you know, why they're important to sort of put them in a rough order. But the council is ultimately going to decide whether it's right order or not, so again, this is meant to be informative, that, that's the goal of the subcommittee, is to be informative to the council.
And I would, I would add that, um. The subcommittee would also query both the community and the safety, um, committees and other committees. To make sure we have a fulsome list that we're considering, and then we, when we talk about priorities, Craig and I spoke a little bit about this, but. There's certainly items that can be done easily, quickly, with not requiring much in the way of funding, whether it's education or something else, and then there's others that will. Require significant funding, so part of, I think. Um, the way we've talked a little bit about prioritization would be, try to now analyze a little bit to the extent of. What, what can we get through fast, what will have a big impact on safety versus things that are much more involved to provide the safety.
Okay, that's helpful.
Yeah, I recommend, the recommendations, I mean, the prioritizations are only going to be recommendations.
Right, no, I'm clear on that, and that's, that's very helpful. All, and you have ways of facilitating these important issues, um. My real focus on, on the first one was, for example, you may end up deciding home hardening needs some. You, you know, like the ASCC might have a view of some of the home hardening steps and. Are you planning to reach out, you said to the committees, but if applicable and helpful, I assume you'd also. Reach out to commission, depending on the scope of what these, uh, items end up being, it may end up that they're so refined that. It's not applicable, but, um, I'm just trying to make sure you're not trying to exclude them if. You're, um, if they have jurisdiction over. Something that you end up thinking is, is necessary.
Sure, yeah, no, no, there's no, no intent to exclude and, and certainly on the safety element, you know, no intent to e- exclude anybody.
Um, yeah.
And I would hope something on home hardening, it would be more like coming back and saying. According to fire experts, here's why home hardening is so important.
Oh.
And then it would be up to ASCC to say how we're, you know, like, what are the architectural and site implications of home hardening? And then eventually it's going to presumably be building code and stuff that would have to come either. And then eventually it's going to presumably be building code and stuff that would have to come either through. The fire protection district or through, I mean, building stuff eventually comes back to us at the council.
Okay, okay, that, that, that example is very hopeful. I do not have other questions at this point on the first one about resilience. So. We are, it, I am going to keep them separate. Tell me if you want to handle a different way. I was going to open it up for public comment on this. Okay.
Yeah, let's just open up for public comment on this one and then we'll close this one and, you know, we can. Take a vote on this one and then move to the next one. I think that sounds perfect.
Okay. And again, there's nobody with their hand up in the schoolhouse, right?
On the schoolhouse.
Okay. Online, we have Robert Shawstuck.
Hi, it's actually Nan on the chain. So. Yeah, I don't think Rob would comment on this. Yeah, I wanted to comment on the idea of the collaboration. And I'll go back to something Craig said. Three years ago, the, you know, Laura Russell had a template, basically, could had a. Had a consultant devise the template and the, the safety committees were asked to basically fill in the blanks. And it was a very frustrating experience in a way because it was clear that there were lots of. You know, even though we tried to be as, as complete as we could within the framework we were given. There were spaces, there were things that were not considered, and there were also places where the committee's purviews overlapped. And that's why it would be a really good idea to get, if the safety committees are involved, to get them to work together. For instance, my committee works, would work on flooding, landslides, that's the same, the sustainability committee. Has, has that, has, has those concerns for, for huge. Flooding, rainstorms. And we overlap, we clearly overlap with EPC, with WPC. So to avoid repetition and to make sure that, that all the blanks are filled in. As I said, I would really suggest. And from the committee point of view, having the committees work together before this document goes to the planning commission. The other thing is that in the safety element, not everything gets codified. The, there are some elements, there are some parts of it that are. Aspirational, basically. This, this is what we would like to see. And there are other parts that will be very specific, like home hardening, it may get, may get into the building code. So it's, it runs the gamut. And I don't want to get into the details too much, but I think that if we start with. The work that's been done, look at carefully what's been done and try to improve on it. We will be much farther ahead than if we start from the beginning again. Let's take a look at everything that's been done first and try to identify the holes and, you know, try to. Improve. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Nan. I see no other hands here online. So we can bring it back to the council for discussion. So I'll start with Helen if you want to make comments.
Sure. So I know you two have worked hard on this, so I appreciate what you've done. I absolutely think that these two subcommittees make sense. I think, you know, the safety element is a very, I don't want to say one size fits all.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I'm going to come back for comments on the safety element one. We're taking the.
I recognize that, but I'm commenting on both. Thank you. To go together, actually. Because one is, one is. Actually, I recognize you've got them separated, but I, my comments go together respectfully.
Make your comments. That's not what the rest of us are doing, but that's fine.
I understand that. So the safety element by state law is a mandated format. And I recognize that. And so I appreciate what you, we are doing to move it forward and to get it passed in town. The resilience then is how we take our action. So it's an action plan. So thank you.
Okay, Mary?
I'm waiting for the second element.
Okay. Craig or Rebecca, do you have any other comments before I make mine?
No, no other than without blending too much into the two. I, I think what Helen's saying, just to put in context is right. I think of the safety element as high level, which is why it was the first of the two. But because they got reversed, we're talking about the details first. So, so that, that's, that's just right. And we'll blend the two together when we finally exit out the back of this. So go ahead, Judith, all yours.
Yeah, so I, I think it's a very helpful that you want to. Get things rolling again and with some focus and, you know, facilitate staff. This is all good. I think for me, the, the first. You know, it starts out saying. The subcommittee will develop a comprehensive plan to enhance community safety and resilience. I got to be honest, I'm uncomfortable with the breadth of that, but what follows sounds fine to me. The two immediate goals to me make a lot of sense and you've clearly thought about it and have a great starting point. So from my perspective. I, I would support forming a subcommittee for, and I'm only talking about the resilience right now myself. To do that, but I am uncomfortable with the, the very large statement. Is that a, a necessary part of what you're asking for approval for now? Or can we consider this something that is going to be more focused? And then as the work continues, we can see what makes sense in terms of next steps.
Yeah, for, yeah, no, I think the goal, at least the way I was thinking of it was, we do these steps, we come back to the council. And the council, we talk about kind of what we want to do. I mean, I think the goal is to drive toward a comprehensive plan.
Right. Agreed.
Yeah, I, but I'm, I don't think we're like, oh, subcommittee, just go away and come back with a fully baked comprehensive plan. Like, that wasn't the goal. The goal was to start with these two, get some council, you know. And approval. And then if it makes sense, which I think it will, but assuming it makes sense, then we'd go and, and take the next step. And that, yeah, our long-term end goal, not just for the subcommittees, but for the council, should be to have a comprehensive plan. Yeah, so. That might have been overly generous words, I'm sorry.
No worries. I, and this clarity, I, we could. Unless anyone else has further comments on the resilience piece, I am going to bring them to a separate vote. So if someone wants to make a motion to approve the subcommittee for the resilience piece.
I'm, I'm happy to make that motion.
I'm seconded.
So I, a motion to create a subcommittee for resilience planning. Do I need to, do I need to name who's in the subcommittee?
No, I think we're gonna look for the, we're agreeing just to form it. And if that's the motion, I have a friend.
Respectfully, Mayor.
Can I please finish my sentence and then you, everyone else can have their comment? But what I would be looking for is to add a friendly amendment that I can articulate. So if you want to finish what you were going to propose, I'll then outline the friendly amendment that I have.
Thank you. Town council is, is stating that we do need to include that it would be Vice Mayor Taylor. And, and Councilmember Flynn as part of the subcommittee. So that one needs to be part of the motion.
Well, that wasn't part of the, like, it was implied, it wasn't stated. So I wasn't sure that both Craig and Rebecca want to be on both subcommittees. So is that what we're, just to ask you to clarify your proposal here?
Right. I am proposing that because of the, that was the, the intent.
And Judith, if it helps, I mean, I'm happy to be on this subcommittee. I don't need to be on both. So we, you know, I'm, I'm happy for it to be, you know, a separate decision on each one.
Right, right. If we're making one motion and we have to include who the subcommittee members are. I just want there to be an ability of any other council members that want to participate, to, to have their piece right now. So we're, we're going to look to make one motion with the subcommittee members. So unless Helen or Mary want to put their hands up. We can include Craig and Rebecca as the subcommittee named members.
Helen shook her head. Mary shaking her head. Are you shaking your head?
Yeah, no, I'm comfortable with that. I, I want to have the same clarity on the next one as well, though. So.
Perfect. Yeah. Okay. So I think we're, I think we got a motion and I think Mary seconded it. So I think we're good.
Well, my friendly amendment is to make it clear that it is a non-decision-making. And, and that it, you're not developing a comprehensive plan. That really the focus is on the two items that are enumerated here. Would that be acceptable?
That sounds, hang on one second, I'm just rereading so that it. Yes, I am fine with that. Thank you for your amendment.
Okay. All right. In that case, are we now ready for a roll call vote? Catherine?
Just to clarify, Mary, I think who seconded it, are you okay with that friendly amendment?
Okay with the amendment.
All right, great, Mary. Then I would suggest we are ready for a roll call vote.
Thank you.
Councilmember Flynn?
Aye.
Councilmember Hufte?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Haskell?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. All right. So thank you for that. I am just looking at the next, trying to figure out. If, is there anything else you want to say about the second memo, either Craig or Rebecca to introduce it and set the stage? You've already previewed it.
Yeah, I think we've said most of it, but now we're getting them in what I thought was the right order. So I will just reiterate Helen's point that the safety element is a required document. Of a general plan by the state. And it, my experience in talking to people, it generally isn't what people think it is. It's not the thing that magically makes the town safe. It's a very high-level statement of goals. And so the idea of the two of them was, one of them is, we need a safety element because it's required by law and we'd like to get that moving. And then the idea of that second one was to actually start talking about some safety initiatives that we could do something. And have a material impact on the town. So that was the goal there. And to answer Linda Brother's question, that was the one public comment we got on this was. This was in no way intended to circumvent the process. This was to help get a safety element out. You know, with, you know, working with staff to get a safety element out into the process.
A document. The document.
Yeah, the, the safety element document, to get it then to the planning commission to do all their review and comments and then eventually come back to us. And then obviously, it's, it's ultimately the town council's decision. So, yeah, in no way were we trying to, you know, like. Write, write and approve the safety element.
And I would add, to kind of follow up on what Nan Shawstuck had said. You know, there's been a ton of work in town by our safety committees on the original draft template. Safety element document. And so our intent or the, the idea of this memo was to just try to get an update. Working with staff to figure out where, where all that material is. And we have a draft on the website. Does it incorporate all the feedback that the committees gave already? Or did that kind of get lost in the, in the, in a black hole? So it's just a matter of recollect all that, confirm that the draft has what, what the feedback is. And then go and talk again to the safety, you know, the safety committees and the planning staff. And figure out what, what continues to need to be done to get the document to a point. Where it can then go to the planning commission. So just to clarify that.
And I would add one more clarification to the clarification. I also would like to make sure that all the committees understand exactly what the intent of the safety element is. Because I think the last time around, it was a little bit confusing and I think we got a lot of good comments, but not all of them were. Relevant to the safety element per se. So those, I think we can collect in the safety initiatives part instead.
Okay. All right. If there's no more background, Helen, do you have any other questions on this?
Are you shaking your head?
No, thank you.
Okay. And Mary?
No.
Okay. So my questions are of a similar nature. You've, you've headed off the one that, that did concern me. It's create a town council safety element subcommittee to manage the process of completing the town's safety element.
Document.
Yeah. And, and again, I, I think it was more general. I, I, I read it, you know, because I, I had heard your concerns earlier and you had this. And, yeah, the goal was to work with staff to get a safety element document together. Not to somehow own the whole, you know, thing through to approval. Like, that wasn't the intent. So again, my apologies for maybe not as careful word smithing is.
Yeah, no, that, this is. And then it says work with staff committees, residents and consultants. Might there be a case when you need to reach out to a planning commissioner? Or an ASCC member in order to connect? Like, was that a deliberate omission? Or is that just a possibility? Because it might be helpful to mention that.
Sure. I, I don't see any reason why we couldn't reach out to them. I think what we were trying to exclude is. We weren't trying to get into the negotiation with the planning commission over the safety element. Like, so if they have comments, that's great. We were trying to collect from all the committees, all the information to give it to the planning. So, so sure, as individuals, I think it makes total sense. As a body, a deliberative body, no, I don't think we want to get into. And that seems like a weird interaction for a subcommittee of the council to be working with. A deliberative body that then reports to the council. That's, that, that's not what we intended, yeah.
Yeah. And, and frankly, I think if you had said managing the process of completing a draft of, or something like that. The document, it kind of flows better, but we can get back into that. Unless you think that that statement's inconsistent with your intent, I think I have no other questions.
That is the intent, for sure.
If, if we want to have a motion with draft in it, that, that would very much be in line with what we were thinking.
Yep, okay. And it says the financial piece. But it says that the estimate was provided a while ago. Are you saying this would be? Are, by implication of forming the subcommittee, are we agreeing to the twenty-five to thirty thousand? Or is that just more background that we've already talked about that and in February?
Yeah, it was meant to be background. We talked about it and before it comes back to the council, I think, you know, we want to understand. Because again, I, I think what I would expect is we would come back to the council saying, okay, look, here's what we collected. Here's, here's kind of what needs to happen next. We probably need to hire a consultant, a safety element consultant. But at that point, we'll have collected all the information. And I think the council should say, yeah, planning director, you should go hire the consultant, get this thing written. And then that basically gets delivered to PC, which then comes back to the council. That, that was kind of what we had in mind.
Okay, that's great. Those are my questions. Unless anybody else has any others on the council. I'm sure there's no hands in the schoolhouse at this point, correct?
That is correct. There is still one person patiently sitting here. I'm impressed, but no.
Well, they, they get the endurance award. Online, I see no hands raised. So we can come back and just have a brief follow-up discussion. So Helen, I don't know if you have any additional comments?
I do. Thank you. The one comment that I have is. I do, thank you. Um, the one comment that I have is, um, I feel like we often. Use PB Forum, which is a great forum, thank you for founding it. Um, for outreach, and I feel like we don't get many pop-ups for community engagement, you know, at Roberts. Walk, going into the squares, going to the schools. Um, you know, to talk to the community, and I would like to see those type of pop-ups. And community outreach, because, you know, as part of this plan for community engagement. So, um, I would really like to see pop-ups, so thank you.
Helen, can I ask, um. Are you thinking for the safety element, or are you thinking more for the safety initiatives? Because I, I, my concern is for the safety element, it seems like a lot of the public's not gonna, you like, they're gonna go, okay, we get this required, but. I think they really care about the safety initiatives. So is that more where you would think of the pop-ups?
I think, yes, personally, but I didn't think of it for the first item and I got scolded by, because of combining them, but I agree with you. I think it makes more sense and people are more, um, interested in the actionable items. And to be able to prioritize those actionable items, which is your first, the first. So I would like to see those type of pop-ups for us to go out into the community and really, um. That, and, um, to have really, you know, at the picnic at. Our farmer's market and such.
Got it, okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Mary, any comments, discussion points?
Nope.
Okay. And, um. I think you're gonna, uh, already anticipate mine, which is, I'd like to see this. Um, reef, like, I'm comfortable as long as. It is to manage the process of completing a draft of the town's safety element documents. Um. For. For further review by town per its processes or something like that. And then just add the word, um, commissions in to A. Um, but I, I think it makes a lot of sense to get this started. Um, and just to be clear, I, I don't. I don't think we want to address a budget for this at this point. It's just a formation of a subcommittee. So we'll, like, not assume that that's part of what we're looking at tonight to approve.
So I, I think that's all completely in line with what you said. The only clarifying question I'd ask you is. You said commissions. How about commissioners? And I'm just trying to make that distinction. I don't think, okay, we're not really trying to interact with commissions. Like, it could be committees and commissioners. Like individual commissioners versus, do you want us to actually interact with the planning commission?
No, 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 you're right. You're right. And, and, and frankly, if you decide that. There, there is not, you know, like, you don't need that input because what you're doing is preparing something to go to them. I would defer to you. I just didn't want it to be an omission that causes, like. Some kind of issue about the scope of your, your ability to talk to people. So. Yeah, I, I would defer to you all on how to get that draft together efficiently.
Yeah, so I think we use the word commissioners. That gives us the flexibility, but it also kind of makes the point. That we're not trying to interact with the commi- like, I wouldn't want to get on the planning commission's agenda.
No, I get it. I agree. That, that makes a lot of sense. Good point. Um, I think to Helen's point, I agree, the more outreach, those types of. Um. Non-electronic means, uh, could be a good element, but again, I defer to you on the process that you select. And I assume, but I don't, before we go to a motion that has to include the names of the subcommittees. I would just want to confirm if Mary or. Um, Helen would like to be on the subcommittee. Conversely, I'm assuming Craig and Rebecca do. Um, I am not interested in it because you all have more expertise in this area, so. Uh, could people comment on that, please?
Well, I can comment. I, I don't feel the need to be on this subcommittee. I'm willing. But I don't feel the need to be on this one. Um, I think I have more to add to the safety initiatives subcommittee. So.
And, and I'm flexible.
I don't know if we can talk Helen into.
I'm ban- bandwidth-wise, I am. I, I will pass. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, no, no, that's fine. I, I, I wanted to make sure you had an offer. And, and Mary, you're certainly welcome to jump in as well.
Thank you. I, I feel kind of bandwidthed out myself at the moment. But, uh, I, I wanted to know, uh, how we're going to capture the corrections that Judith made in this. For the record.
So I have a suggestion. I mean, it's, it's unusual that the mayor makes a motion, but it's not. Um, it's not unheard of. So I would say in this particular case, Judith, if you wouldn't mind making the motion, I think you're. You have a very, I think you've clearly stated what we all agree on.
What needs to be changed.
Yeah.
Would you be comfortable with that? I'm, I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
I, I don't mind. I can make it as a friendly amendment or a motion. Um. So I could, um, uh, I will make a motion to create a town council safety element subcommittee. To manage the process of drafting. A, or completing a draft of the town's safety element document. And according to the state mandates, I would keep everything else. Um, then the safety element subcommittee would work with staff committees. Uh, commissioners, residents and consultants. To finalize a draft of the safety element. For, uh, further, um. Discussion and approval for the towns. You know, ordinary processes, for example, the. Review by the planning commission. And then pl- plan for the community education. I would keep all of that. Um, and to appoint Craig and Rebecca if they are willing to. Do the subcommittee.
I would second that motion.
Okay, roll call?
Councilmember Flynn.
Hi.
Councilmember Huffy.
Hi.
Councilmember Walter.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Hi.
Mayor Haskell.
Hi.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay. Um. Great, so we're through the regular agenda, and we have one subcommittee report in the packet. Uh, does anyone else, uh, not subcommittee, committee liaison report in the packet? So does anyone else have any verbal updates they want to share at this point?
I, I just had a question of who actually submitted that.
I did, I'm sorry. I can't, I'm sorry. Does, will the clerk? Put the information on who it's from in the future, or do I, was I supposed to do that?
There's a form, there's a form that's helpful, that's very helpful.
Sorry, I missed, I, yeah. Yeah.
Well, why don't we recirculate it, um, for us all? Just, it's never hurtful to have, uh, the draft template. Um, if I could ask someone on staff to follow up and just recirculate the template that you would recommend, we can. Refresh.
Uh, yes, we'll do that.
Okay.
Now that we know it's from Helen, which I guess based on the people who are here, but what, um, what you had written up, but that's perfect.
So, uh, I did want to report on the MRSD, um, and I'm gonna improvise because I. After having kept it up the whole meeting, I couldn't find the document. Uh, we did get, uh, uh, the. From the la- the last meeting, which I reported on at the same time as this meeting, they, uh. Convened again in. At the time of this meeting. And in order to establish a, a board level. Ad-hoc committee to reconsider the, uh, historic. Complex and its uses. Number one, for the, uh. For the use of the barn. And also for, to consider housing and consider the interpretation of the conservation easement. Uh, that, their particular function is going to be to reach out to, uh, the council. Of Portola Valley. And, uh, and to staff, as well as to the fire department. And that has been established, although they haven't picked their three, three people yet. They have three board members. Who are going to be compensated for that. And, uh, they're gonna, I think the next step is gonna be reaching out to Mark. To. Uh, see how we feel about it. I, uh, have, uh. I got the report back, it went, uh, today, it went well this evening, the meeting took forty minutes. Um. Yeah, I'm just saying, uh, and they did, uh, pass it. Um, I do have to. Could, I'm concerned that it's gonna take staff time. And we're gonna have to figure that out, and how we handle staff time. Uh, although. Uh, and it may require legal time. I think that's, that's the other, the other issue. What I pointed out to them is, uh, they have the expertise. Most of MRSD have, have all the legal expertise. They need, and we just need to, uh, find out what they think. So, uh, we, uh, it, communication should go relatively well. Uh, and we'll have to, once we get this done, we'll have to, at the next meeting, probably have to determine who, who wants to serve on this. If anybody, and if we want to do it.
Okay, well, we, we're not allowed to discuss that substantively. Um, there is some process. Issues, I would encourage you to work with Catherine and Mark on. What, what the next steps on behalf of the town are, what's being asked of us? And then we can talk about, you know, the next steps, as you said. Okay. Um. Any other reports?
Just in the interest of time, I will submit mine written, because I know how late it is for you.
Yeah. Well, if there's anything super urgent, feel free, but otherwise, that, that works well. Um. All right, so briefly, taking public comments, I'm just gonna go, I assume no one in the audience has their hand up there. And online. I do not see anyone. Uh, so bringing it back, um, I think we can have a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Do we need a roll call vote for that?
I don't even know if you needed a motion. How about this, all in favor?
All in favor of adjourning. I, thank you.
So thanks for hanging in there. I know it's late for you.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, well, thank you all. Um, and sorry about the technical issues.
I think for you, we get to say good morning, right?
Yep, two, two AM.
Yeah, all right. Sleep well, good night.
All right, take care. Bye.